...work session for the month of October. And we could have our school system folks come on forward. I think everyone has the agenda, but I think what we're going to do for efficiency's sake is actually get started with 132, then move into 42. And that will probably take much of the morning. So if you're here for 55 or 133 or 51, those will probably be later in the afternoon. So just to manage everyone's time. And 54 will also probably be later today. So thank you so much for being here. If you don't mind just introducing yourself. And then I think some of the basic questions around 132 are really sort of what stage is this in the process? What are the next steps? And how do we move forward?
Good morning. My name is Dan Lubley. I'm the Acting Director of Capital Planning and Construction.
Good morning. My name's Renee Kamen. I'm the Manager of School Planning.
And good morning. My name is Bruce Gist. I'm Executive Director for Operations with the School System.
And I'll go ahead and address where we are in the timeline. As we stated at the public hearing, where we are at this moment is the superintendent did propose to the school board his proposed FY 2021 capital budget. The school board did take that under advisement and added Talbot Springs Elementary School replacement and Hammond High School renovation in addition back into the budget to create the Board of Education's proposed FY 2021 capital improvement program. That was then submitted to the county for your review. We have, as I noted, on the 21st, we were here for the public hearing on that item. And now we're here at the work session. It has been submitted initially to the state. This is part of the first phases of the CIP process. As part of the state submission, the county is required to take a look at the submission from the board and sign a letter of assurance noting that the projects have been looked at, the projects do have validity, and have some county backing. Again, this is just the first part of the submission. It will then, from this point, go on or come back to the county for the county executive to review, as well as further investigation from the county council, with it finally culminating back in May of next year.
Which is funny because it sounds far, but seems so close.
It does go by fast.
So essentially, it's the signal of the government body's support. So the fact that while we may not necessarily have the capital budget now, or all knowledge of what those pieces are, the fact that we are pursuing additional revenue sources for our capital projects so that we could potentially leverage those in support of these projects would be...
Yes, ma'am.
Would be a sign. Okay. Are there any other questions on 132?
Yes. Any questions?
All right. It's done.
On, was it Monday night? What night were you here?
The 21st.
Okay. I had asked you about the Ascend One relocation renovations, which are down here as $3 million for 2024. And I ask if you could bring me any information of what... Yeah, if you could bring me any information about that. My understanding is that the Ascend One renovations are as a result of an effort to relocate the school district offices from the Cedar Lane School to allow a firehouse to be placed on the Harper's Choice Middle School field. Is that correct?
That is, they are tied together, correct. And we are working on gathering documentation to provide to you by Wednesday, as you requested. And I did ask Mr. Gist to join me. He has been the point of contact with the county with regards to both the Ascend One project and the Harper's Choice transfer of property from the school system to the county.
So I do have a number of questions. I'd like to know first if that transfer has already been signed off on by the school district.
No, it hasn't.
Okay.
No, it hasn't.
Okay. And I'd like to know if, I'd like to know how many people are actually located right now in the Cedar Lane School? Are there permanent offices there, or do you only use those for meetings? I know I've been there for meetings, but...
No, they're all permanent offices and the building is totally, totally, totally full.
So about how many people are there? Can, do you have an idea?
I think it's about 160, Dan.
It's roughly around that, yes.
Approximately 160.
More specifically, it does house the county diagnostics center, our food nutrition department, special education, our people transportation, as well as our Hispanic liaison, our, I always get their acronym wrong, is the International Student Services as well. As Mr. Gist noted, also in the back of the facility, we do have a Head Start program as well.
Okay. And what will happen to the Head Start program when those offices are, if those offices are relocated to the Ascend Building?
The school board has no current position on the relocation of the Head Start program. I did notify the program director a couple of years ago when there was a tentative word-of-mouth schedule. This thing has been conducted word-of-mouth since January of 2015. This transaction, it's changed and had taken on many different looks and perspectives. But I did notify Ms. Dayhoff about the condition, that when we leave, we have no planned exit strategy for Head Start.
I've talked to her about it a couple of times, Deb, and we should all be on the lookout for two or three Head Start classrooms around Harper's Choice.
Or none, if we don't take down the Cedar Lane School.
Right. But, you know. So, yeah, she's already looking around.
Or she won't need to.
But I don't want to get between you and, you and the Harper's Choice Firehouse.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. So the plan then is to move all 160 people to the Ascend One, I should say, the plan right now, is to move 160 people to the Ascend One Building?
160 people from the...
I'm sorry, from Cedar Lane School to the Ascend One Building.
From the old Cedar Lane facility. In addition, I think we have about 40 to 60 or so out of the ARL facility that would be relocated there.
Who are also in offices over there right now, but...
That's correct, freeing up much-needed classroom space in the ARL building.
So the $3 million, was that part of the capital budget from last year? Or is that, I see it's out in 2024, so that's a ways.
The, that coincides with the current schedule, current schedule that the Department of Public Works is considering.
I mean, should we consider the cost of that relocation, sort of an added cost of doing the firehouse there?
I think that it absolutely should be considered as part of the cost of the relocation. So when the county says that the land is free, the land isn't free because it's $3 million to move 160 people from Cedar Lane School.
So if the firehouse is costing us $10 million, it's really costing us $13 million.
So you could buy a piece of land for less than $3 million and save Cedar Lane School and not have a firehouse on Harper's Choice Middle School Field.
And you can give that money to Hammond High School.
There you go. We have so many ways that we could save this money and where we could use it. Yes. Or even expand Cedar Lane School so that Ms. Dayhoff could put maybe another classroom there for Head Start, or improve the one that she has. So if you move all of these people, now 200, to Ascend One, is that, is the, it's the second floor of the Ascend One Building, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that big enough for all 200 people?
Mr. Lubley and I have reviewed the space, and Dan could probably tell you a little bit more about our spatial considerations.
Yes, ma'am. We'd have to take a look again at the staffing needs, but when we first went through the project, the second-floor space at Ascend One was large enough to house all of those individual departments.
And the $3 million would be for renovation of the, that second floor? Or would it be for the physical move? Or what, what would that money go for?
It would go to and cover a number of things. One would be the reconfiguration of the current second floor of Ascend One to, for the populations coming from the Board of Education. Mr. Lubley has worked, and again, this was done a couple of years ago with staff, and our staffing needs and configurations have changed dramatically over those couple of years. But certainly, the space is greatly needed. Additionally, the building, in order to bring up with co-compliant code, we would have to, the majority of that cost is located in the construct of a, of stair towers on both the east and west profiles of the building. One would be accompanied by an elevator to provide proper ADA access.
So there is no elevator up to the second floor right now?
There is an elevator currently on the second floor. And Mr. Lubley could speak a little bit more about the code requirements.
There is an elevator. It's currently centrally located at the main entrance. Part of the discussion when we were looking at bringing the school system over to that facility was trying to create a school system entrance. Therefore, everybody who was coming to visit the school system weren't necessarily filing in that central entrance that is to the Health Department. So it was more of a review of the logistics of how the facility would work. Some of the departments that I did mention that are located at Old Cedar Lane do have a high public interaction. So we were trying to take a look at the logistics. There is a, an elevator, but since we'd be on the second floor trying to create that main entrance for the school system, that's why we're looking to add an elevator.
Okay. In the interest of, in the interest of time, I am going to ask if you would leave your card with me so that we could have a follow-up meeting and I could discuss this further to find out more of the specifics regarding this move and what would happen over at Ascend One Building.
I'd be happy to.
Okay. And there is a final public meeting on the firehouse on Wednesday, this Wednesday, October 30th, at the Florence Bane Center at 7:00. If you would like to hear what the community has to say about the firehouse and moving the Cedar Lane School.
Understood.
Thank you very much. But don't go far because we're going on to CB 42. We're going to do our big binder switch now. So the last session we had, I know Mr. Youngman had some questions about student yield projections. And so that may be a good place to start. We can start with walking through the formula a little bit, and then, we can walk through the formula and then walk through the assumptions and start with student yield.
Yeah, I would think maybe, since it's been a while, I'll defer to you, but maybe if we could kind of refresh everybody...
Sure.
Where we were, and then we can start asking questions.
So we start with the HCPSS capital costs from FY 2020 to 2019, which gets you to about $1.1 million? No. No. Then the next slide has you going down the long-range master plan and subtracting the projects like modernization, roofing projects, playground equipment, barrier fee, things that are not necessarily growth-related. Then we have the percent of projected new students from new development at 42%. Projected new students from resales at 58%. Then to calculate capital need, we take the school capital costs. Then we subtract the estimated state funding at an average of 35, given the last several projects. Then we take that total, multiply it by .42 for the 42% of student yield from new units, which gets us to the capital cost of new housing units at about $205 million. Then we go through and look at the post-APFO unit projections. We're looking at single-family detached east, single-family detached west, single-family attached, and apartments and condos, which gets us to about 30,000, 30 million square feet. You keep drinking this coffee, so I'm tracking all my zeros. Then we take our capital cost of new development, which is about $205 million, divided by total area of new development, which is about 30 million square feet, which gets us to 681 square foot. So then we can, so those are, the assumptions that are baked in to that are total capital costs, subtraction of state aid, student yields, and square footage.
Should we also bring up Carl?
Absolutely. Mr. DeLorenzo?
Since he's been looking at this now, too. Renee, probably the, the first number that jumped out at me on that calculation that you're getting right now, which is sort of what we started with last week, or last month, was the 42%. 42% is based on historical, so that's a pre-APFO number. If you hold resales flat and you're bringing square footage down, 100% of that reduction is in new construction. So the percent of that whole, the percent of the new square footage is going to be less than 42%. Now, we've talked about how as APFO bleeds off, it may sort of gradually grow back up to 42%. But then the square footage is, you know, this, this part of new construction is going to start to do that as well. But it looks like this model is using a post-APFO square footage growth and a pre-APFO allocation to new construction. What do you guys think? You guys have looked at the model?
Actually, my office has not looked at the model. This is the first time I'm actually seeing this.
Oh, should we have Jeff up here, too?
Yeah, Mr. Brownow?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jeff.
I mean, I know, I, we've been working back and forth with Jeff, and we took a look at our, what was it? It was Friday, I'm sorry. We looked at our current projections and based on the housing projection that we built off the most recent, the 2018, 2019, because we haven't built APFO yet for the, for what you'll see next year. And we did see a decline in the number of projected students coming out of new housing over time. And that, of course, is based off of the housing projections that we used. But I think that was all before pre-APFO, if I'm remembering correctly. So we would have to then take Jeff's, no, Jeff's Department of Housing, and take those post-APFO and reapply any student yields. Our student yields are actually almost a year behind because we use the most recent five years, or three years, or one year in order to determine any new student yields, but they really only fluctuate very small, as in like .01, it's in the 100th percentile. The other kind of unknown that we're not gonna, we really don't, and I think I spoke to the, this council, is we don't know how the yields from new construction will affect our other yields. Like, you're taking away a portion of our new, our student yields, but that most likely will have an effect on the other things that we're trying to project, apartments, existing housing units. So we really don't know the total effect of what will happen. So we'll still receive growth. It might be reduced in that one, but we might see it overflow in this area, if that makes any sense.
It does. And I think that there, I mean, I don't want to speak out of turn, I'm certainly speaking for myself, but I think that I certainly have a lot of anxiety in terms of, I really want to make sure we get this right, but it is, there's an element of future-telling to it. So I think that if we, you know, are committed to evaluating this process as we go, that it doesn't have to be, this is what it is forever, you know, because I think, looking at when this was first set and then not reexamined over so long, that certainly led us to some problems where we are today. But we want to be close.
We want to be close. And if we shoot too high, there will never be the political opportunity to adjust it down.
Right.
So let's just make sure that knowing the unintended, knowing the negative consequences of raising it, we don't do something that doesn't have support for it.
Well, we want to capitalize on the funds, and we don't want to raise it so high that there are no funds to capitalize on.
Right. Now, I was concerned with something that you said as you were going through, which is that, you know, we're still kind of trying to, and look, for anybody that's watching, you know, new APFO went into effect, you know, three months ago. So we're now trying to set this whole new policy based on a world situation that we have no history on, so everybody's trying their best to do, you know, to come up with a good solution. So go back to the actual capital budget, which is the, sort of the bucket we're trying to fill, the seats we're trying to build. That's, that need is based on post-APFO, right? Some post-APFO student growth.
Well, but she's just said that that's not necessarily, that they're not sure, because then you could get more students from resale, so you would still have...
Still growing.
You'd still be growing. Then, you know, it's just the percent share that comes from new construction.
Right.
Yeah. So when APFO was created, was it 2017, the new legislation?
2018.
2018, sorry. We actually have to break down our projection now in order to report it to County Council. And so what we have is an estimation, not an estimation, what we have in our feasibility study is a chart that says what our official enrollment is, what our projected enrollment is for that same year, and then about how many students are coming out of it. And so we will, there will be a lag with any new post-APFO because the, again, the numbers that we used were the, the year before last in terms of housing projection. Did I say that right? Yeah. So when I come up next year with the 2020 feasibility study in my office, they will have those housing units that are now in the bin because of APFO and pushed out further. So a projection that we might be seeing, I don't know, name a school that was going to have a high, I'll take Bowman Bridge, for example, that was gonna have 12 students coming out in new construction based on the housing population projection that we have. If there was any projects that were delayed, that possible 12 students that we're anticipating might slide out a little farther in, in the year.
But they only, I mean, they slide out. They don't ever go away.
They don't go away.
Because with our, the way that we do things here in Howard County...
They will show up when their timing is out in the bin.
Right. There's no permanent moratorium, like, okay, the schools are overcrowded, and they're still overcrowded, and they're still overcrowded, and they're still overcrowded. And guess what? They're still overcrowded, and now you can build, because that's what our APFO allows. So they're, they will always be there, and they will always...
Eventually, they will come.
And eventually, they will come.
Theory, we should be mitigating over those four years.
Plus, plus, we're, we're probably through redistricting, some schools are going to open, so that's why I...
Yes.
That's why I really agree with what you said in the work session last time was, let's say we went from 42 down to this sort of temporary 27, if that's the right number. Over time, you are likely going to work your way back up to, over this 10-year period, back up to 42.
Or over a five-year period, or over a three-year period.
Right.
You know, it could happen very quickly.
Exactly. And notwithstanding some of the yield numbers that I know we're not comfortable with.
And we don't know, resales, I mean, I think the, your, the biggest issue here is the number that I know that one of the developers has now floated is this 27% would be the new construction versus 42%. And we have no idea if we're going to have more resales. We have no idea if it's going to be 27%. It could still be 42% because there could be fewer resales. Why would there be fewer resales? Because the price of houses may go up if there's fewer, if there are fewer new construction homes. And people may say, I can't afford to come and live in Howard County and buy new, buy a, a home that's on the market now for what would have been maybe $500,000. And now because there's not any new construction, it's now 600, and they're priced out of the market. So there's no way, this number, whether it's, whether it's 27, 32, 36, I think the only thing that we can really do as a county council is base this number on our historic facts. Ms. Kamen, Mr. Brownow have given us excellent historic facts to base this number on, and we know what the school construction numbers are. We either get that money from the developers so we can build new schools and the developers can continue to develop, or we say, we'll take less, and then we won't have the money to build the new schools, and we'll be looking at another bill that is put forth by the county council, or someone on the county council, to extend the moratorium period because our schools continue to be overcrowded. At some point, we have to say, we need this money to make sure that the schools can, can be constructed or added on, and if we don't do this, then we will continue to overcrowd our schools. We can't have, we can't do it all. We can't say, okay, now we're going to lower the, this impact fee that has been determined through this formula based on the good information that we've gotten from the county and the school district, and say that we can still build the schools that we need to address overcrowding. Both things can happen.
Can I, can I say something about the historic facts?
Thank you.
That you referred to? So what, one thing is the 42% is based on something that we provided. I asked from the school system to provide that. That was four years old, four years ago, as part, at the very beginning of the APFO process. So the 42% I think needs to be updated. Part of CR 99 that was just passed in July, which is the open-closed, you know, the school capacity test, some information from the school system was attached to that resolution, and that information that was attached is newly required. The school system must, must provide that with the new school capacity charts that are put out every July. One of those pieces of information is updated yield information. It shows how many children are coming from apartment turnover and resale versus new construction. That's more of an up-to-date number, so I would recommend looking at that to get a more up-to-date student yield. Regarding, will the student yield between resales and new construction change post-APFO? I, I don't see that connection. Just because you have less growth from new units in the future, that doesn't mean that the ratio between resale and new construction is going to change.
Why wouldn't it?
Well, I, I don't know. I think, I would think less students are coming in because you have less new construction, but does that mean that you're going to have more students in resale? I don't see the connection between those two.
Well, the resale market, the resale market doesn't all of a sudden, you know, increase by 50% because new construction goes down by 50%. People, people in their houses still want to move. We can't just kick them out of their houses. I mean, it might tweak it up a little bit, but the inventory of resales isn't going to magically double because we cut back on new construction. What's going to happen is, it's just going to get more expensive.
Right.
You know, but...
I guess we don't, we don't know if there's a correlation. We have no idea if there's a correlation. But the more important thing to look at is the more recent data that's attached to CR 99. That's, that's how I think you derive a, a good statistic of resale and apartment turnovers because it's based on last year's data, as opposed to data that's four years ago.
I think it is difficult to look at, you know, we need to look at the larger trends. We can't just look at the last single year because even, what's the memo that you guys It's the apartment numbers between, or the unit numbers between, I say it's 2017 and 2016. I mean, there's a wide variation in those. So I think looking at a single year might take us down the wrong path. And Mr. Glendening, if you might speak to this a little bit, or have Ms. Harrod or Ms. Curran speak to it, because I know you guys took a look into the student yield projections for us.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have Ms. Harrod come up and talk a little bit. She's, our guys, her and Monica have done a ton of work on this, as, as you know.
Is that Monica or Moniker? Sorry, nobody heard that.
Oh, you're making fun of its accent. I see.
Sorry, when you're the person that makes the joke and you're the only one that laughs, it's really... Sorry, when you're the person that makes the joke, and you're the only one that laughs, it's really.
I mean, if you can't laugh at your own jokes, it's, it's a hard day. Thank you, Ms. Harrod. So, if you could talk a little bit about the student yield projections and sort of what you guys dug into, and sort of the wide variety, and any recommendations you may have?
Certainly, Michelle Harrod, Deputy Auditors, Deputy Auditor from the Auditor's Office. We did take a look at the information that Mr. Brown, Brownow is indicating, attached to Council Resolution ninety-nine from 2019. There was the report from the Board of Education. We did plug those numbers in to a spreadsheet and calculated by school what the yield for the new, the new additions for new construction. We did take out, there was some information on that spreadsheet that is the other category, and I think that's the trans, the, I, Ms. Kamen would speak best to that. But we did not include those numbers, so we were just looking at the resale, the new, and the apartment. And if you look at a straight percentage from the information on two thousand, from CR ninety-nine, it was an average of thirty-three percent was from the new construction. If you do a weighted average, it would be twenty-six percent. So, as we've talked about in, in the meeting, that percentage, the yield percentage, depending on what data you use, that, that number does vary. From our perspective, from the Auditor's Office, the official numbers that Ms. Kamen provides to us, not just when we're asking for, you know, the current yields, she, they're consistently sending that forty-two percent, which is the current official number. And I know that information is dated, but that's the official numbers, from my understanding.
Right, that's sort of the best we have at this point in time.
And I, and, and maybe this is the threshold that we're crossing over, and not necessarily gonna disagree with that, but it sounds like where you were going was, we need the money.
That's right. Thank you, David.
And, and we're, and we may have to take ourselves out of this box of, we really tried to, you know, do the math, like the handout we just got, which is the PowerPoint, you know? And if we do that math right, or, or we use a different assumption, and it doesn't come up with enough money, we might need to deviate from that and say, look. You know, even if, even if the assumptions aren't what we thought they were, we still, we still want X dollars. And I just think we need to be honest with everybody out there that we are hitting new construction probably for more than they are generating, at least in these early years.
Well, but that.
And I'm not necessarily against that, I just.
That they may or may not, we don't know. That's the problem, we don't know. We don't, no. You feel you know.
At least in these first couple of years, there's no way that number's gonna be forty-two percent. There's not.
Are we gonna, are we gonna bet on that?
Yeah. There's not, because you can't, you can't keep one part of this. If, if this, if the student, the, you'd either have to have more student yield per unit than you had in the past, which we know we have some issues with those assumptions. Like, you're all of a sudden gonna have more kids per townhouse, or you're gonna build more townhouses, because more is getting through APFO than we expected, but then your square footage number's gotta go up too. So, either way, it ain't gonna be forty-two percent, so.
The forty-two percent, though, concerns the, the brand-new home sales, right? Once it's.
For two years.
Sold, for two years?
It's, once a home is older than two years, it counts as a resale, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I guess I have a question. So, when was the last time that you updated the forty-two percent number? Was that based on the chart that we used for the presentation to the APFO Task Force, which showed the ten-year history plus the ten-year projection? Has, has that been updated more recently?
We're trying to generate that now, an update, since that was, but given our time crunch in my office, we haven't really had.
You guys aren't doing anything else?
We're not doing anything else in my office. We are seeing a decline, I can say that, in the number of students. What that exactly is, new students from new construction. What that exactly is, we haven't gone down through the numbers yet. And we're happy to update the chart if that's a request. But in our projection, a resale, if, if it's a new construction, after it is occupied, whenever it gets sold, whether it's the following year, it's now considered a resale in terms of our projections. It's not two years, it's a year, because it's now occupied in our world. And if we get a, if there's a, if we can match a new student arriving at a particular school from a resale of, say, that new home that had already been occupied maybe the year before, it's gonna become a resale in our, in our projection.
Because you're still adding net new.
Yeah, but you would still be adding a net new, or, or not, depending on the whole. It would be a net new from the resale versus the new construction.
But what, in a circumstance where, like David's talking about, we're applying percentages, all of those new things get swept into the big pot as part of the resale percentage.
Eventually, yeah.
So, we're.
Or it could be in our, the other category, which would be cohort survival, or what have you. We have a bigger category out there that's not captured in the resale versus new construction, which is our cohort survival, our pre-kindergarten survival rate. All of that is in the other category.
I wanted to just jump in really fast. These microphones are very loud. I think we're all, I know, I pushed mine.
But you know what, I did get a text asking us to all speak into our microphones more, so perhaps they are appropriate for the viewing, the viewing public.
Well, I want everyone to hear us. I just didn't want to have us not forget, and I'm sure that we haven't, the conversation about affordable housing, where the numbers fall in to enter into the formula to output the final dollar amount, dollar and cents amount. I just don't want to forget that, and I know that we haven't.
Yeah, no, I think, and maybe we just agree on the format, but if we go through the assumptions, try to arrive in an agreement on assumptions within the next fifteen, twenty minutes, and then we can walk through the considerations with affordable housing, grandfathering, those types of things.
And I have an amendment with me today on affordable housing that I would like to share with our colleagues.
Do you want to update every, I know one of the big things we talked about was whether or not we could have different rates, or hold other people, certain folks, at the old formula? And we got Gary's memo this morning.
Yeah, I don't want to get too into legal advice, but it seems that we have options.
Yes.
So, we'll start with that. We, we read it, we know that there are options.
Got it.
Yes.
One thing that I did want to talk about also is, when's the last time that you guys have gone back and audited your apartment yields? Not apartment yields, student yield from apartments. Do you remember the last time you guys looked at that?
Technically, it happens every year when we rebuild our projection from the ground up. And so, the ups are downs based on the ins and outs of an apartment as a total. We don't, we don't differentiate between apartment, number of bedrooms per apartment, but we do the total number of units. So, every year, for every, every attendance area, we will update our apartment yields based on the number of students that we see in that five-year period. There's a little art behind our projection, that if we know through, say, talking to a principal that their apartment building is bringing in more students, we'll go and we'll look at it, and that will be an indicator for us to, if we're still building the projection, to maybe bring it up a little bit, or bring it down. That's the art. So, like, if, if Principal X says, hey, I'm seeing a lot of kids out of this apartment building, we'll go through our five-year, what we see, and we have the ability to choose between a one, three, or five-year average in our projection. So, technically, we look at our, our student yield out of apartments every year when we build our projection.
A, a couple of the financial models that we've seen regarding developments and things recently showed that, and I guess these are consultants that are doing it, but they're getting the assumptions and data from you guys, show that we're still looking at like point one-one students by apartment unit? Have we moved on from that, or are we still around that number?
I can go back and check, but I think that's been a little bit of a decline. So, there, so there's the county-wide average. If, if a, if a attendance area does not have that housing type we use, the how, the county-wide average, we've been seeing a slight decline. I think it's about zero, point zero eight now, but I'll double-check to see. We haven't been, it's been on the downtick.
Is there a difference between affordable and non-affordable?
We haven't looked at that.
Because I have, we have a spreadsheet. And I, I guess it came from.
So, what we've done is, for the affordable housing legislation recently, we were given specific affordable housing. We don't know that unless we're told that, if an apartment is affordable or not. So, what we did was, we matched student yields to affordable housing. We have not done that holistically around the county, but we've done that on a case-by-case basis when, when requested.
I mean, I'm looking at, go ahead.
And the small percentage that we did see did have a higher student yield. It was three apartments, I believe, three apartment complexes out of them.
Part of that is not just that they're affordable housing, part of that is the bedroom size.
Right, they're, they're building more three-bedroom units in affordable housing units, because that's what.
I didn't want to make an assumption that the spreadsheet that we've all seen necessarily, which is why I limited it, but I'm not sure that it's gonna be much different. But I mean, we're looking at anywhere from point five to point nine students for, per apartment unit.
Also, again, I think we all need to accept the changing realities of the world we find ourselves in.
Point one-one was probably right twenty years ago.
Yeah, which is that housing prices continue to rise, wages don't. People have children, and they live where they can live.
You know, so, you know, I know one of our big concerns is, I, I just, everything I've seen, and maybe I'm just missing that one thing. Everything I've seen shows that apartment buildings, excluding downtown Columbia, because it's just marketed differently, are generating far more students than what we assume.
Well, but it's still not more than single-family detached.
No.
The largest numbers still come from single-family detached.
Right, but I think those assumptions are closer. I think it's the assumptions of point one-one per apartment that have me concerned.
Right, regardless of bedroom size.
In the past, for the longest time, you generally see one student per ten apartments, hence the point one-one.
That can't be right.
It's not right. I mean, the numbers that we have from Mr. DeLorenzo when we asked about those kinds of numbers for Robinson Overlook are the numbers that Mr. Youngman is referencing now.
Again, that's different, that's.
Those are specific projects. Those were specific projects that we were asked to look at the rate for affordable housing, and so, we had to match the, we had to match what was in the system versus those apartments. So, those are different. What I'm saying is, county-wide attendance areas, specific, some attendance areas will get more students out of an apartment based on probably affordability. Again, we haven't studied that. But what I'm saying, in general, we will see about one student per ten apartments.
But are you, maybe this is the average working against the denser areas of our county? But if you're talking about District One, if you're talking about Elk Ridge, if you're talking about Normandy, you're talking about D One. Point one-one is not and has not been a reasonable assumption. And I thought your answer to Mr. Youngman was, in fact, that the school system is pushing that estimate down, that it's now point oh-eight.
It's based on what we're seeing, actually, it's based, and again, it varies. There's county-wide, and there's each individual attendance area. And something like Normandy do have higher, higher rates. And so, that would, I think, Normandy is assigned to Hollyfield Station. I don't know, so the, so that's what I'm saying. So, it does vary from, from attendance area to attendance area. It does, based on probably size. We don't know that, because we don't study the size of the apartment versus the yield. We are looking at students that come in at that address. And then we look to, we, we use that, well, we see either one, three, or five. And again, talking to a principal, we might, that's the art behind the sign, the, the projection. Talking through the principal, knowing what we know on the ground is happening, we can try to increase that rate. But there's only, we're a year behind in how we do our projections, and that's because we use, and it's been validated multiple times, our methodology. So, like I said, I'm using one to ten, that's what we see county-wide. It can very much be different at Hollyfield Station versus Bowman Bridge versus, there's a new community coming up, I can't remember the school name. So, that's why when we build the projection, we go based on the school, and then what else we know. If there, if, if, I don't know, I'm trying to think of Longfellow, didn't have apartment units and now had department units. We would look to the county-wide to give us an estimate. And then, once those apartment units come online and we see the number of students coming in, we adjust that rate. So, that's what I'm saying. We technically look at our apartment yields every year when we look at our student, students that are coming in and students that are leaving, and how they're coming in versus how they're going out.
Does it have something to do with the age of the apartment?
I don't know.
Because.
It would be a great study, to be honest.
Because when you just mentioned Longfellow, it would kind of hit me that, you know, let's say you have one of the old, you know, sort of, you know, Columbia Homes projects there. And if people are there, and they've been there for a long time and they still qualify, maybe their kids age up, and the parents are still there, sort of like we see in some of these resale communities. So, maybe those yields are lower, but on all the new construction apartments that we're seeing outside of downtown Columbia, those numbers are five to seven times what we're, what we're assuming. And then what happens is, it's like if there's a development of twelve single-family detached houses that come online over three years, and we blow the projection, it, it doesn't necessarily, you know, change the world that much. But you've got a three-hundred-unit apartment building that delivers over a two-year period, even if your assumptions are right, those kids are coming fast. And we've seen how that, we just wake up one day and we're overcrowded. So, then. Right, because, and the students, because apartments lease up just so fast. So, those students are just coming like a tidal wave. And then, if on top of it, our projection's one-fifth of what it needs to be, I think that's where, especially in District One, you know, where we're really not getting it right.
I mean, keep in mind, so your projection model, you don't use county-wide averages. You, you actually have a, a yield by unit type for each school district, elementary school district, middle school. So, you have seventeen times three yields.
Yes.
So, so basically, and these are updated annually. So, it, it could be that if a new apartment comes on board, and for whatever reason, there's more students show up, they could have been underestimated initially. But then, over time, based on empirical evidence, those numbers are adjusted to try to reflect the, what's actually coming in on the ground.
Again, because also, an apartment might open two-hundred-and-thirty units in year X, but they don't lease all two-hundred-and-thirty in that one period. So, it, it, there could be a delay in seeing that, and it could span over a year. An example we saw was in the Wild Lake community, there was a new apartment being constructed there, and it didn't lease up all the way, all the way in that first school year that we were trying to predict. It caught itself up, both in the projection and in the leasing, the following school year.
And it might have something to do with also, what school it's in.
I don't remember the name of the community, but it could have been, it could have been where the Starbucks is, that one.
Yes, yes, the Alta. And did it yield more students than you anticipated?
I don't recall, I don't think it did.
Okay.
I'm gonna.
Wait, so, this discussion about apartment yields is very important, but can we walk back how it relates to the assumptions baked into forty-two, as we have about seven minutes left, to agree on the assumptions within the formula?
Let, let's, at rate of, let's get away from this, I agree, but I would.
I think it's important, I just want to make sure we get through forty-two.
I would ask that you guys think about, talk to the Board of Ed, whatever you need to do, but let's do a full-blown analysis on every apartment building in this county, and how many kids are in it. And let's try to find some correlation. Is it affordable, not affordable? Is it the older apartments versus the new apartments? Is it that kids are piling into the apartment building at Turf Alley because it's the cheap way into Mary's Ridge? I don't know, but we've got to try to figure out some correlation, and.
Really, really fast, you mentioned your methodology had been validated several times. With what, with what Councilman Youngman just mentioned, is that feasible in a timeframe that is, I mean, we're, you know, we're trying to move things here, but is that feasible? Would a sample of it be a little bit more feasible? I mean, I just, I'm just trying to figure out how this logistically would work.
It would, it would take a while for us to collect the data and try and tag it to.
It would, it would take a while for us to collect the data and try and tag it to, to the different possible effects. We wouldn't have number of bedrooms. We wouldn't, we'd have to go through a while. And correct, how long did the apartment study for Columbia Town Center took, take? That was about eight months? I don't know, I wasn't here. Do you remember?
Oh, yeah, I don't, I mean, it took a while. I don't remember how long it was.
And so.
And.
So in terms of the context of this conversation and getting it done within the next couple of weeks, no.
I don't understand that. Hold on, I, like, we have some database that shows the address of where every kid lives, right? And we know the, we know the addresses of apartment buildings.
It's not just that. It's also trying to figure out what year the student arrived and if that's an actual new construction yield. So just because.
Oh, I'm not looking at new construction. I'm just taking apartments in general.
Well, no, in general, but in general, we would have to look at when they came into this system, if you're looking at net new versus just moving in between districts. So we would have to peel back some of that. That's why I'm saying it would.
Right.
Take a while.
And I know this is something that isn't going to happen while we're in the middle of, I mean, unless the Board needs it for redistricting, I'm not asking for it.
No, I mean, it does speak to the larger issue where there's, you know, the error rate is, what, point two over the whole county, but then within specific schools, you can see there's swings of 40 students or.
Because it all comes back to, if the assumption of the student yield is low, then the capital budget might be low. So it all comes back to kind of, you know.
I mean, that's exactly the problem, is that we're not, we're not building for the number of students that are coming in because our numbers aren't working, I don't think. I mean, of course, we're not going to build enough schools if we're underestimating the number of students produced by five times or more. I mean, that's one of my, you know, you want to agree on the, on the numbers here, but my problem with the capital budget is, is I think it grossly understates what we know we need. We know we need more than what's accounted for in this 10-year plan, and that's all that we're trying to target in terms of, you know, in new revenue, independent revenue.
Well, but I think we also all know that the transfer tax and recrodation need to increase, and that will be paid by new construction as well as existing home sales. We don't have the authority to do that now, but that's, it's an important, I don't think we should lose sight of that.
Yeah, and remember that the transfer tax and recrodation are also on new construction, not just resale, and in new construction, generally, if everybody remembers when they bought a house, you split that 50/50. Buyer usually.
I didn't buy a new house, so I don't know.
Okay, well, no, when you buy a resale, same thing. When you buy new construction, buyer pays the whole thing. So 100% of that hit of the transfer tax and recrodation tax increase will also get pushed to the buyer of new construction. So just keep that in mind.
Really fast, just to, just want to ask really fast, how confident are you that the methodology that you referenced with a reasonable margin of error is actually working?
I'm pretty confident.
And the reason I ask that is because, like, as council members, we may feel things or we may see things at the bus stop, or we may hear things in the community, social media, but if you're confident about your methodology with a reasonable margin of error, we want to be confident in your confidence in that. So we can say, these are the numbers that are happening. And are you saying that that's, that's true? Okay.
Dr. Jones, would you be comfortable with a 15% error rate?
Is there a 15% error rate?
As to apartments, it's my understanding that apartment error rate is up as 14.9%.
No. We dug down into that question, and that was related to the housing projection error rate. So if they were saying, it was not related to student yield, it was related to the number of units being predicted from apartment units. And I can pull that report if you would like me to send it to you.
I would like to see it.
Because when we had, we went through the validation of our methodology, one of the steps that our consultant took was looking at the housing projection that we received versus to see if there was any error in that respect that would attribute to, say, us having a high or low projection. So I can certainly give the county council the report. It's actually posted on our website, and it's actually on the board docs under June 13th, but I'll send you all the link.
That'll be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, so then I feel like we kind of are in the middle here. Councilman Youngman thinks that the CIP may go down because you'll have less students produced from new.
Oh, no, I don't think it's going to go down.
Okay, so I thought you were saying that with the new post-APO, post-new APO, the new construction will decrease, which means the number of students coming in will decrease. Which means that the capital.
No, I think, I think that the student yield growth that we are using, notwithstanding this apartment question, is a post-APO correct number. I'm just saying that we brought the students down, we brought the square footage down, and we didn't change the allocation.
But they're not.
So we're using projections and history, not apples and apples.
But they're not going to go away, they're just getting delayed. So.
Well, they're getting delayed, that's right. And that's why I agree that you could almost look at this as, over time, at the end of five, 10 years, whatever, you're going to be probably back into a post-APO world. And we don't even know, that could be next year because of redistricting.
Right. So do we agree on using the CIP 2020, 2029? Is that somewhere we can agree that that is the first big number?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know that I know enough different to disagree with it.
I'm not sure we have different information to go off of.
But I, but I would.
It's not different than 132.
But I would like to accelerate it, which is why when we get into talking about leveraging the fee and bonding the fee and all that.
Sorry, the capital costs.
You know, I mean, I think the, I think that the.
You would like to accelerate the, the capital cost?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think that certainly the order of priorities of the schools and projects might be the right order, and their costs are probably right, but when you start pushing, like, a Turf Alley Elementary School out to 2031, then, you know, that's, I mean, heck, I don't know if we'll even need it in 15 years. You know, we need it now.
Yeah, but then you're talking about apartment yields and, where is it? The memo we got from the administration has, in terms of used and occupancy permits by unit type in 2018, you've got 28% in the southeast and only 17% in urban cities. So while there's growth there, I'm not sure that it is advancing, the need is beyond the need for the Mission Road Elementary School or.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not.
Hammond expansion.
I've lost that argument. I'm going to abandon it. You can stay on the firehouse.
Come with my data.
I've abandoned 43 and 44, who goes first? It was for me more just of all the projects, just generally how they've been pushed out. I mean, we've put Talbot and Hammond back in, but they're not paid for, so.
Yeah, but there's the debt capacity. There's just the simple reality of what can possibly be done.
And that's, and that's why I said, you know, the next conversation I want to have and why I'm glad the administration here is, is how you bond this to move stuff up. But back to the capital projection, I don't think the total numbers are wrong. I think we need to accept that that's.
Because I think part of the issue is previously when there were much larger periods of growth, and then this county and the school system started building all these schools, well, we're still paying them all off right now. And that's one of the reasons why we're stuck in this predicament now is because instead of trying to do incremental management of student yields, it was build everything, build it now, and now we're all still paying that off, and we can't service our students today because of the students we serviced 15 years ago.
No, I don't disagree, I don't think you can do, right. I, I get it, you know, I mean, we talked about it, it's kind of a, it's not that complicated a financial model, honestly, but all I know is that, you know, I know the school system would appreciate an extra $10 or $15 million a year, cash on cash, but knowing that, you know, our needs start to decrease 15 years from now, and we're so far behind right now.
Right.
I just, I think we need to brainstorm to every turnover, every rock we can, to figure out how, if we're going to collect this revenue reliably over time, how we, and maybe it's a compromise, you bond some of it, not some of it. But, but again, I think this is a different conversation than, is the CIP the number we're trying to fill?
Right. So in terms of assumptions, are we good with slide one? With 20 to 29, HCPSS capital cost?
Yes.
Are you in for me?
Yeah, well, I'm in for three others.
So that's, that's the 1.1 million, oh wait.
It's this one. Yeah.
Okay.
And I certainly understand that they're looking at 10 years, and if the world changes in year four.
Right.
And one school gets pulled, one project gets pulled out, another one gets pushed in, that's going to happen, but as an aggregate, is that a reasonable.
Right.
Dollar amount for us to target seems.
I mean, I kind of feel like it's the best information we can hope for, but I.
I'm not stuck with it forever.
Right.
And did the new, didn't the Board have a new proposed capital budget for next year?
Yes.
That's, I was just, I was just wondering about.
The, the new Board of Education proposed, sorry, which is what you guys just discussed, actually is 913, 85. Sorry, I need my reading glasses on.
Is that the one that we have on the active resolution?
In 132, yes. FY 2021, 2030 Long Range Master Plan has a total of 913 million and 85,000.
So the, so the CIP number that we used two months ago to calculate the impact fee is different than what we have attached to CR 133?
Yes, but I think that's based on fiscal realities, not actual growth needs.
Right, yeah, it sounds like the number went up.
We based ours on last year's CIP, all the calculations we did.
That's what we.
So unless the administration's saying that they're going with what the Board's proposing, I mean, that's the numbers that we have.
I was just raising the issue that, the point was that they're using the latest information. I was just raising the point that there's some more recent information that's been submitted.
Right, but I guess my point was the most recent information is what we have in front of us. What the Board is proposing isn't really.
Right.
It's not, it's not the administration's. Right.
Right. Okay, so it's approved, it's the best we've got, capital costs.
I think I know the answer to this question, but we don't know the difference in yields between the different numbers of bedrooms, do we?
No.
Okay. The reason why I ask that is I've talked a lot about, you know, how we could craft a policy that would sort of encourage the smaller apartment units and discourage the larger apartment units by, one, better matching the amount of these fees to where the students are coming from. Obviously, you're getting more students out of a three-bedroom than a one-bedroom, but also, two, you know, if you're a developer, you'd have to really want to build a three-bedroom apartment because now I've made it more expensive, and it might, in the short term, discourage that type of unit that is just hammering the school system right now, I think.
But we don't have data that it's hammering the school system, aside from the select projects that we've looked at.
Yeah, you know, you're right. I mean, only based on these kind of last new, like, the six new apartment complexes, again, not, not Columbia, you know, based on their allocation, based on their allocations between one, two, and three bedrooms and how many students.
Right.
You can, you can play with the numbers, and I got within 90-something percent. I mean, it's, I'm, it looks like, you know, a three-bedroom apartment, you're an easy one student per unit.
I was just saying, our sample size is really small.
Yeah, it is.
When it comes to that. And I think sometimes things get said here, and then they become these nuggets that just mutate and spread on the internet, and the myth becomes reality for many people.
Believe me, I've got you on that, but.
So I just want to be sure that people are clear that, you know, we're looking at smaller sample sizes, that there are these discrepancies, that it is important to look at data.
But on these, but on these six newer apartment units, on these sixes, not a minuscule sample size.
Okay.
You know, the deviation's pretty small. I mean, they're, they're pretty tight.
Is now 1110. I do want to be sure that we are going through these assumptions so we can agree on the assumptions before we get into potential amendments and other things that people want to see with this bill. But it sounds like a good county council, Board of Education joint session topic. Could be projections one day.
Can I ask one follow-up, though? I, I thought Mr. Brunau asked Ms. Kimin that there, there is some compilation of projected student yields based on planning districts and size of unit, I mean, maybe not bedroom, but type of housing? Is that, where is that?
It's, the type of, it's within our projection.
No, I'm saying, where does the public go to access that current information? Or Mr. Youngman and me?
Give me my number.
Oh, yeah, so, I would have to go back and give you the, there would be 77, 74 yields, and do you want new construction or resale? It's, it's within all of our information, but it's reported out by school. So there's no one source of that information.
I'll follow up.
We'll take it all.
Yeah. Whatever that exchange was, yes.
Yeah, if you want to send me an email or homie, that, that's great, so I can figure out exactly what you would like to see.
Yeah, whatever it was that you two were talking about.
Oh, so, yes, it's.
Well, I'll follow up. I don't want to derail this, but it sounds like there's some body of information that some of us have not seen.
Because it is, it is important, and it does certainly factor into this, it's just that this is the time we have for 42, and I want to make sure that we're dedicating that.
Sure, and I want to say, I did receive council questions about a week ago on student yields, and I do believe I responded. I don't know if Ms. Hank's forwarded to you, but it does have the new construction student yield by unit, which is part of the response to Ms. Walsh's question.
Thank you. And then are we good with taking out the non-sort of growth-related things that are more maintenance? So the roofing, the barrier fee, playground replacements?
Well, I don't think we have a choice. We have to take those things out.
Because they're not growth-related.
Because they're not growth-related, and the state would not give us any kind of funds to build or renovate these types of things. So, yeah, we have to take them out.
Okay, now we're on to projected new students. So.
Well, this is, we've just been the last 40 minutes on, yes. So my personal feeling is that we should accept this figure as it is at 42. And if we get really good numbers or better advice over the next two weeks before we vote on this, then we can reconsider it. But I think right now that we should, we should assume that it's going to be 42% based on historical data and not knowing anything different.
Well, then are we going to use the historical square footage number?
Well, what if we review it every five years? The yield percentage every five years and take an average of that?
I'm getting confused on what, I'm getting confused on the motivation of why we're choosing certain, I'm getting confused on when we're choosing to do something historical versus look at it from a source versus, you know, this is what has been done past one year, 10 years. I just, I want to keep that standard so that, yeah, it just makes more sense to me that way, if that, if what I just said made sense.
No, I mean, to me, I was saying going forward, so that way you go forward five years, take a retrospective look, and then change the percent based on that. I think with all of these things, we're, it's based on the best available data is the standard. The best available data is what we have, and, right?
So then you build into the legislation what, that we have to review it every five years, and it's going to be based on some particular formula? Or is it just us, who may not be here in five years, deciding that we're going to do that?
I mean.
I mean.
That's, that's a possibility.
I mean, once you have this fee.
I wouldn't reject that. I wouldn't reject that.
You have, there's only one direction it can go.
Right, yeah, I, I mean.
Nobody's ever going to vote to reduce this.
Well, but what if you put it in there that it's the last five year? I think my issue with the pre, when looking just at a single year is that then whoever's the following year is whatever the previous year is. But I think if you take a wider look, then you're looking at sort of a larger average.
Look, in all honesty, I don't completely disagree with basing it on history because everything else is kind of a guess. Like, we've been in this new APFO world for three months, we've got redistricting. But if we're going to use historical, then all the assumptions should be historical. Not this one's historical, this one's projected because that's what gets me the highest number.
Well, but that's not what.
Well, the only, the real projection.
That's not what anybody is saying, Mr. Youngman.
Yeah, and I mean, the projection really are the capital costs, and those aren't projections. Those are actual numbers of what it would cost to build the things that the school district needs in order to accommodate the students that we have here right now and the ones that we expect.
That are coming.
Based on historical data. So that's not really a fake number, that's an incredibly real number.
But that makes sense because when you think about it, the county's still going to grow to full build-out over X number of years. And whether you need these schools, I mean, I argue we need them now versus in 10 years. But with this being a long-range plan, let's say that's the number with or without APFO. Because whether we get there in seven years or 12 years, you're eventually going to get there. I'm more talking about the calculations, keeping that number right, square, it, it, I mean, it is, it is, this students coming, this number of students coming from this many units, is this percentage divided by this many square feet? And we're using the smallest square footage number and the largest student yield number that we can. And that's the disconnect, so.
Well, we're using the best available data for everything that we have.
No, we're using historical for one and projected for the other.
Do we have another updated number that is the best available data, you would say, for student yield?
Well, the best available data is what we could verify, which is all historical. I would think, even though I'm not sure how verifiable that is, given.
Right, I mean, I think that eventually.
Previous conversation.
This, this student yield number, it's all based off the, the 10-year growth plan. And then this is just the percentage of that. And I think it is, 42 is, is what we have, it's what we have to work with. Like, do I want perfection? Yes. Do I need to come to the exceptions that that is impossible to get? I mean, Ms. Harrod, when you guys looked into it, it was sort of like, there's wide variations in the 42 is, I mean, that's, right?
That's correct. And I would say, and the, the report that was attached with the council resolution 99, we also saw some variance in that, in that there was redistricting, which kind of skews the number, skewed the number some. So it really, and again, it's not, I don't know how you would verify just the, the one year and take that into a historical context.
Right. I, I don't disagree with you, but then, but, but the square footage number we're using as the denominator is the projection, and that is the guess. So if we don't trust the percentage assumption for the future, then why are we trusting the square footage assumption? Why don't we use the old square footage growth? The pre-APFO square footage growth.
And what, and what is that, by the, just, just so I could understand that?
Mr. Bruno, do you have that number?
Really fast.
I don't have that one.
In comparison to.
I said that might be one you would have.
You don't know it off the top of your head?
No, I don't.
I'm amazed.
I think, is it, is it like 6,000 units? It's a 10-year difference? I think it's 6,000, it might be like 6,000 less units. It was, it was in the fiscal study, yeah. I mean, it could be that once this redistricting is complete, that the post-APFO number is conservative.
Yeah, but.
I don't disagree.
Yeah.
I feel like there are not, even in shifting capacity, we're not suddenly greenlighting every possible school. I mean, that's, in no plan I've seen that's happened.
No, there's, there's still.
It, it's potential. The, the fact that the, the bigger impact was the APFO change of adding the high school test.
Right, that's what I mean, because of all the overlapping.
Exactly, so it's not going to have a huge difference.
I mean, Howard High School may have stayed overcrowded until forever.
Right, so I, I just think to switch to pre-APFO without the, pre-new APFO, without the high school test is not.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying decide if you're going to do pre-APFO or post-APFO and have both assumptions be from the same world. Right now, we've got one that's pre and one that's post. If we say we prefer to use the assumptions or we prefer to use the historical, let's just make that decision. But all the assumptions should come from the same world.
But the world they're coming from is the latest assumption that we have. And one is based on historical data and one is based on projected data. But even the student yield is still, when you look forward, 42 is kind of the best we've got.
Michelle, you, you mentioned wide variances in the 42%.
No.
How, how, oh.
It's in the CR 99 percentages for the last year.
Oh, the CR, okay.
So there was single-year variance.
Okay, thank you. How wide are those variances? Were they like plus or minus one, plus or minus 10?
Well, we could send you that information. We have that, and, and it is varied. Like, you could see where there's a redistricting. There was, I don't remember the school, but the school opened, so there was like a negative 600 units that was showing in, in the other category. There were some other, you could see where the redistricting took place because there were wide, there were large numbers.
I think because there wasn't like a projection associated with that, like, say, new elementary school 42, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, the reality is, we don't know what new post-APFO will do to student yield. Will it, will it depress resales, as Ms. Young mentioned? Will it, you know, we, we don't know. And so we have to go on the, the best, latest data we have. And whether that's, I just think we don't, we really don't have the information on how new, post-new APFO will affect student yield. And so we have to do the best we can do with the information that we have.
Does it make sense to have Carl chime in and see what he's?
Sure, Mr. DiLorenzo, if you, if you have something to add?
Sure, I mean, Carl.
Do you know specifically how new post-APFO will specifically affect student yield? We would love to hear it.
Do you have a crystal ball?
Well, Carl DiLorenzo with the administration. Listen, I think the conversation you're having right now is exactly the kind of conversation that we think is important. I mean, the formula that, that you use can be modified and updated as, as, as time goes on and as we, as we see the realities of the various, of the various assumptions that we're, that we're contemplating. I mean, I think, you know, the, kind of having, looking at this, and this is the, I'm looking at the PowerPoint that you, that you sent around. I mean, I think the formula that you're walking through is, are, includes all the right variables that should factor into, to this calculation. And, and I think that, you know, the council has the ability to, once you set this fee, you're not locked into the fee that you set under Council Bill 42. It's my understanding that you can adjust the, you can adjust this rate annually, like we do with most rates and, and fees when we, when we do the budgeting process annually in May. And so I think kind of reaching an understanding and an agreement on the sources of information that are being used in this formula, I think is the right approach to take. Because then you can, it creates, it creates a predictable process for the development community and for the county. And it allows the, the, the rate that's being assessed on new construction to align with the realities of the CIP of that year, to align with whatever growth patterns we're seeing, both in residential construction and in school population, so that we don't have to worry about predicting and whether or not our predictions are going to come to fruition. I think we have a formula that we can.
Apply every year.
Yes.
That actually makes a lot of sense in that way. We don't have to.
And that, because I don't want us to have to do this every year.
Right, that actually makes a lot of sense.
I'm concerned about the formula going each year, though, because then I think you look at the issued use and occupancy permits by unit type 2014 to 2018. You've got one year where it's 1,200 and the following year is 2,100.
Yeah, and maybe that, maybe a year isn't the right, the magic number.
Right.
I mean, maybe you, maybe there is something that gets written into the, to the law that requires this type of analysis be done every year, but you don't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily prompt a rate change. Maybe you only proceed with a rate change every three years or five years.
Right, I just think like the take, looking at a larger chunk of time would give you a better number because otherwise the predictability is still lost. Because then whoever's building in 2017 is paying different than 2016, is paying different than 2018, even though they're not the one, you know.
But the concept is the same, right? Is that we have a shared agreement on variables, sources, sources of the inputs. And that create, and, and that creates a process by which we can analyze both historically, right? Because we'll have historic data after we establish the rate in CB 42. And then we can also factor in projections given to us at that time, CIP projections, population growth projections. And having a consistent methodology like that doesn't bind you to a number now, you know? So I think this conversation that I'm hearing really kind of supports that concept. And so I think you're on the right, I think you're on the right path.
Because I think many of us agree that sort of looking at this and what year the school surcharge was instituted, what was that, 1996?
Right, and, and.
2003, I think.
Oh, 2003?
And, and.
So still, little, little bit too long between reevaluation periods.
And just to follow up on another comment that Councilman Youngman had. When we talk about how we utilize the revenue from the surcharge, right?
Yes.
We talk about.
Which we all need to get to.
We talk about the pros and cons of issuing bonds versus not issuing bonds. And I think there are definitely pros and cons. I mean, I think if you use the revenue generation from the surcharge to issue bonds, you now have a debt obligation on those bonds, interest payment obligations on those bonds. That gives you the money upfront, but that also increases the cost of that money. I think, you know.
You can do a mix, you can do a mix of PEGO and GO-bonds.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, Holly Sun, the Budget Director, made a recommendation that if we, if we use, if we use the revenue source as PEGO rather than general obligation bonds, those, our dollar goes a lot further because we're not using that PEGO to pay interest. I mean, I think her estimate is over 100 years, I think it was about $100 million difference. And I think this might have been shared with you a few weeks ago, but under your current, the current rate in CB 42, the geo-bond capacity over 20 years would be around $180 million. If we use those revenues as PEGO, that increases the, the, that increases the value of that money to 275 if you use it as PEGO instead of general obligation bonds. So I think, you know, along the lines of having a consistent formula that we use. I mean, I think having a, a consistent methodology to think through how we use the revenue is also a valuable, I think is also a valuable question that we try to answer now in this legislation.
I mean, you could argue that for any bonds we issue.
Right, and the reason why we issue the bonds is because we don't have the cash now, right?
Right, and that's certainly where we are with being five or six years behind on school capacity.
And so I think you have to decide, you know, do we, how do we want to plan for funding the capital, the CIP?
And look, I don't want to put us into, you know, this situation. And look, I acknowledge that the CIP we're looking to fill is a 10-year projection, and we'd be stuck with this debt service for 20. I mean, this is, I haven't, not saying I've totally figured this out. But again, if we remember back to the old, you know, sort of population and school growth charts from two years ago, you know, you, we show that we're, you know, we're growing fast, and then we start to taper off a little bit in 10, 12 years. Maybe with APFO, it's 15 years from now. So, you know, do we have a situation where if we can fill this hole sooner than later, then 10 years and out, are we going to end up in a world where we're going to be able to keep up with a slower amount of growth by doing additions to schools and things like that, rather than these like five or six new buildings, four or five new buildings?
Plus the land cost.
Need now, huh?
Well, plus the land cost. I mean, we're, we're personally at this point, but I'm agreeing with you, I'm saying that.
Yeah, oh yeah, the land cost right now. You know, and I just, look, I, I'm not convinced it's the right thing to do, but I think we have to look really hard at it, or at least a mix of it, where we're using some of this to accelerate some of these projects now.
Well, the good news is, that part we don't have to decide just, just yet. The part we have to decide now is the inputs. And we can certainly discuss the potential for, you know, revision periods and how long. And those, those conversations can absolutely continue on because I think it seems that there is some interest in that. So whether, we just need to figure out how we do that. And then, so are we, I still don't feel like we've all settled on the inputs yet. Because, or at least a majority. Because the question is, I mean, I've gone around and around on this, and I would much rather get it right. And I'm always open to admitting when I'm wrong. But we're going based on the best available data, the most updated data that we have. And so I feel better about that if we build into something that says, you know, it's revised every three years based on this formula, every five years based on this formula of, you know, the capital improvement plan, the student yield, the square footage assumptions. I'm, I'm certainly open to that, but for me, it's like, this is the best available data that we have. That's the most likely square footage we have, it's the most likely student yield, whether that's delayed or achieved immediately. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, really fast, the long-range master plan numbers. We had deductions for costs. Earlier we said, are we, we taking out those costs?
Yeah, well, we have to, the way that it goes.
So, so, so then, then if everything else stays the same, and I'm looking at the, the calculating capital need slide, that line item there would be just around, let's say, 1.1 billion minus 2 and 1/2 million. So let's say one, so, so instead of 49 million, it'd be about 700 something million. 700 something million, multiplying that by 0.42, our capital cost shoots up. And then that brings us, I don't even know, I'm just looking at it really briefly, but I don't even know what it would be. So I think it shot the 6.81 per square foot up to about nine, eight, nine bucks. And so again.
So you think it would be higher?
Well, if everything stays the same and we took off the costs, then yeah, it would have to be.
I don't think we can take off, I think we have to take off those costs.
Yeah, 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 no, I, I don't, I don't disagree. But what I'm saying is, I just want the people, I just want everyone to see that there's a output at the end. And so as we march along, if we start switching things in the middle, if we're just talking about the formula like, like Carl mentioned, that's great. I think that the input is really, really important.
Right.
But it's also good to say, okay, what happened to the output? And just so we know, just so we can, just so we can talk about it.
Right, so like if we, yeah. Okay, well.
Look, I think that, and, and this is the last thing I'll say on it, is the way we're doing this is we are assuming that the same number of students is going to come from vastly smaller square footage. And I just think that, it, look, if we just want to have the number, we have the number, not debating that number. But there's no math logic to assuming that you're going to have the same number of students coming from much less square footage, which is what this model does. And that's the last thing I'll say on it.
But we don't now.
We know that we're not going to get the same amount of students from 70% of the square footage. There's no logic in the world that would support that.
When you look at the slides that came from HCPSS that have 42 as the average, there are years where it's much lower and there's years where it's much higher. And I think that that will continue because when you look at what the, even just looking at the, the occupancy permits, you've got.
Because that depends on what size units get delivered in that particular year.
Right.
But your square footage number, you're taking what's going to get delivered every 10 years, and you're assuming it's going to be the same every year. and you're assuming it's going to be the same every year. So we know reality is going to be plus or minus in every year. We're trying to get where it's going to probably end up over 10 years. And all things being equal, if that's the square footage that we deliver over 10 years, you're not going to get the same amount of students out of those square footages.
And what if the school system redistricts and every district is open to new development?
Then you're going to, then you're going to build more square footage. Then you're going to build more square footage.
Right, so we don't know. That's like the, the school planning is the, on, not school planning, but the Board of-
The last, the, this is a per-square-footage calculation.
Mm-hmm, which we have to do.
The last calculation we do is we divide by the square footage built. If redistricting results in more square footage, then the denominator is larger.
Right, but we don't know. We don't know if they'll do that, we don't know, we don't know what they'll do.
I, I don't, I don't know how, other way to explain it, so I'm going to stop.
No, I understand what you're saying, I'm disagreeing with you. Well, there's a majority of consensus on that.
Okay, there is a majority.
So we have to keep 132 as the rate for senior units. Should we start with affordable housing and what people would like to propose?
That'd be great. I would like, I would just like to mention that, to, just to bring it up in conversation. And I just did the calculation really fast. Taking off the costs, the, the final output is at 12 bucks, well, 11.97. So I just wanted to just-
For all capital needs?
Yes. Per, no, 11.97, $11.97 per square foot.
If we included all capital costs that aren't matched by state funding and aren't directly related to building costs. So what you're saying, Dr. Jones, is that it's actually much higher than this 6.81, the overall capital.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, I just did, I did everything what is here on this handy-dandy PowerPoint slide, minus the costs we said we were not going to.
Right.
That's all. I didn't say what should or shouldn't happen, I was just saying, I just redid the calculation with what we said we were going to do. That's all.
What's, what's the, what's that total capital cost now? Like, af- after you take out the, the number that used to be the 7.50 number, what is it now?
Okay, I'm not sure. Let me, I think what we're saying is different things. Let me check my numbers again, and yes, I would like to talk about affordable housing.
Yeah.
Well, you know what, why don't we start with something that we sort of touched on the last time, and something that was touched on at the legislative session, which is the grandfathering of projects that receive, of sort of, of projects that have affordable units that receive government funding and investment.
So I've actually drafted an amendment that includes that. And we can start by looking at this if we want. I, it's, it's simply a draft, and I'm happy to change it.
And these are multiple amendments, or this is?
There's two amendments. This is what happens when your staff is gone all day long, both members.
So this is two things.
It is two things.
So this is two things. The bottom, does this include things that have pilot, pilot funding, funding from the county?
The top one-
Well, for the bottom, if we start it.
Includes, the top one exempts, I'm sorry. The top one exempts anything that is new, new construction that has received approval by the state of Maryland as an affordable housing project before November 4th, 2019, which is when we vote on this bill. Or for, or for which an application to the state of Maryland has been submitted for review and approval before that date shall be $1.32 per square foot. That's the first part of the amendment. And the second part of the amendment is to, well, actually, I'm sorry, I read the second part of the amendment first. The first part of the amendment is to create a different rate for affordable housing at 50% of the adopted rate.
So when I took a look at doing this-
It's pretty simple, but I know that you have, you were thinking about something else, so.
Yeah.
Well, when I took a look at it, I looked at it doing as two separate amendments. One for affordable housing and grandfathering, and one for an affordable housing rate. Also, I think we're good on the CIP part, if you've got, I know you have so much to do today, so you two are absolutely free to return to all the mayhem.
Thank you all for your wonderful advice.
Thank you guys for coming.
But we really appreciate it.
Information, preparation, willingness to answer questions. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
October 30th. Be there.
Thank you all so much for coming.
Three more weeks left, guys. Hang in there.
Okay, so let's start with the one where I think that there is perhaps more consensus around, which is grandfathering projects that sort of already have submitted to the state. And Mr. Engel, if you don't mind coming forward, that, you might be very helpful in this, with your subject matter expertise.
Madam Chair, can I interject really fast?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask, Councilwoman Young, does this amendment have legal sufficiency yet?
Yes.
Okay, great. So when I looked at, and I think, Madam Chair, you would say something similar. When I looked at this, we did not receive legal sufficiency, Gary, and John. Oh, got a new memo, excellent, thank you.
Sorry.
Yes, so we have, the Office of Law has dedicated a lot of time to evaluating things, and we do have options. So the, let's start with the bottom part, which is the grandfathering of projects that have received or submitted for state approval.
I, yeah, the Auditor's Office looked into this, and I believe there were five projects that we determined were, would fall into that category, or four, if you recall?
Yes, we got that information from Mr. Engel. And there's, it was the, I can't read this, it's too small. River Watch II, Robinson Overlook, Allegate Gardens II, and Artis' Flats, for a total of 348 units that would have the, have received state funding.
And are there housing commission projects that, are there non-housing commission projects that have received?
Right, if you're going this far, there's at least one enterprise development. Roslyn Rise, I believe, that received tax credits in the last round.
Okay.
They did get tax credits.
Yes.
So I mean, to me, I'd rather make it more broad, so it's any project receiving sort of government investment, whether it's LI-TAC or pilot, or whatever mechanism that they're doing, so that way all those affordable units are, are covered.
Before November 4th. The ones that are already in, used, in process.
Right, well, I think under this definition, that would be included.
I think it would be included, too.
Yeah.
The enterprise, which we haven't approved yet, which is coming before the zoning board. Okay, so I'm just pointing out that we cannot, we should not be discussing it from, we could-
We could just speak in vigor. I mean, my question is essentially, are there private projects that have affordable units that we can ensure would not be hit by this, that could then continue if they've received state or local investment?
Without identifying the actual project.
Which I actually didn't know before I asked the question.
So there is one other project I'm aware of that has received a tax credit approval right now, but we should double-check that to be certain.
Okay, because I think that we want to ensure that those would be included.
Right, and the, I had one from the chair, which I could give back.
It's like musical chairs.
I, I would suggest we look at the definition of affordable housing and sort of clean that up and make sure that it's something that would work.
Right.
And be definable for us, and we can work with you on that.
Okay.
I, right now, it's defined as Section 28.116 in the county code?
Not in the grandfather section.
Not in the grandfather section, that's true.
Yeah.
But is that, is that an accurate definition, do you think, in 28.116?
I don't know what that defines.
Okay, all right.
I've not fully memorized the code yet.
Okay, if you could look at that definition and see if you believe that it accurately describes affordable housing.
Yes, be happy to do that, we'll, we'll take a look.
Okay, and the second part of this is just what we call a temporary enrolled version, so you can see what it looks like with the amendment in it. Which I was grateful to our legislative analysts for putting this together.
So do we, is there a general approach to, is there a general desire to work to, to ensure that the projects that have this government investment, that have their financing done, that are, that have affordable units, do not get swept up in this change?
Are we going to apply the same logic to market rate projects that already have their financing?
I think that is a second discussion.
Second discussion?
Yes, it's on the list of like, where the line is drawn.
Look, I just, I, it takes so long to get the financing for these things. I just can't imagine.
Right.
You, you mean the financing for these affordable housing projects, however they are defined, correctly or incorrectly? Okay.
Yeah, it takes a ton of time to put all projects together.
Right, well, and especially for affordable units, you're cobbling together so many different sources to make it work. So, yeah.
What, yes, Mr. Engel?
No, go ahead.
I, I would like to quantify what we're talking about. Every time we try and make this list, another project comes up. And I was, I was worried about just saying affordable housing project because I don't know if that means we have one unit out of 600, and that somehow qualifies you for this grandfather provision? Because this is going to become, I mean, as, as Mr. Youngman is alluding to, this is a significant cost savings, so there will be some incentive to call yourself somebody who has submitted for review and approval before November 4th. So I, I want to make sure we have that ideally limited number of projects identified and have an acute sense of what that means in terms of units, and even better, square footage and lost revenue. But that, that was my concern, so I'm glad, I'm glad Mr. Engel brought up the same point, which is, I, I need a definition here that we can look back on and say objectively, this did or did not qualify.
And that you would say, this is the investment we're putting into housing affordability in our community, which is what the foregone revenue would be, would be an investment in housing affordability.
Do you know which, we should already know what the projects are, right?
Well, like I said, the, the language here is, is not how the state would define it probably. So we want to look at that, and I, I do understand it would make sense to have a list of what would fall under this, since there's a deadline, there's a date on it, so it should be determinable what's in there and what isn't.
Okay, so we'll continue to work with that, and then we'll be able to see the-
Does it make sense to, to have, Peter, based on this, based on this definition and based on the state's definition, you get those projects to these guys so they can tell us how many units truly are affordable? And then we can also calculate, you know, what we're giving up. Are we suggesting that we give up just, just on the units that are going to be affordable, or on the whole project?
I would, yeah.
I would say just on the units that are affordable, because I know that there's a lot of mixed income units that are going up right now. It's market rate, then-
But don't the market rate units help to subsidize, like it's all part of the state financing, isn't it?
It, it is part of the financing. So the difficulty with doing that is that for artist flats, which is the easiest one for me that comes to mind, is that that's 50% affordable, 50% market rate. I have one financing package for that, and I don't know where I'll find the money. You know, again, that's baked, and there's no easy way to change that other than coming to someone for free money to fill that gap. Whether it's market or affordable, it's all one package.
And I would rather, that's why I would like these, well, when I was exploring these ideas, I wrote them as two separate amendments. One is everything that's already financed, everything that's already packaged, everything that, that is in the process. And then, when we're setting the rate, the rate is for affordable units. So for the grandfathering of affordable housing altogether, but then moving forward, we would look at the affordable unit square footage versus market rate square footage.
And that's how this amendment is drafted.
Correct. But I, but I would suggest that we split them. So the two concepts are on separate, separate votable amendments.
So for the projects that are already, you know, past that threshold of finance, it's going to be the whole building?
Right, including the market rate.
And then, you know, the rest, we'll look at the 50%, we'll look at, you know, we'll look at some metrics.
Right, well, we would look at the actual rate per, per unit square footage. So it's, it's more like this is the point in time, and how do we not blow up all of these other projects that have been in the works, that are addressing significant needs within the county? All right, so that one actually seems not so controversial?
I will, I will just add again, from my, from my point of view, and I feel like I need to advocate for what we're trying to do. These downtown projects in particular, which are 50% market and 50% affordable, are going to be difficult no matter what. So adding to the rate on the market side will make those harder. And finding the money for those is just going to be harder.
Well, one, at least one of those projects would be exempted because it's senior and affordable. So that goes back to $1.32.
Right, so that's a Bannaker, no name, sorry.
That's the Bannaker one, yeah.
But yes, that would, that one will not have this issue.
That will not have anything, yeah. Artis' flats is already in the works.
Library project is the next one on our agenda that, that this would hit.
Okay.
The library development.
So we need to quantify what the, what the investment in housing affordability would be for foregone revenue from the school charge for these, for affordable housing projects. We need a definition that makes sense for state and local.
And the library is sort of a, a unique creature unto itself, too, because the county will be putting in money for the library itself.
Right, it's not the public facility that we're concerned about, it's always the housing piece, but-
The housing level.
Right, the library should be a county cost.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the infrastructure that you might need would be created by the county.
No, I think, you end up dividing out those costs so that the housing component bears its share of anything that's sort of a joint cost.
And maybe that's part of the housing plan, is that for the library?
Well, we could look to the administration and all of you to see whether you'd be willing to put extra money in.
Uh-huh.
But then it's cash coming in, which I would certainly welcome from the housing point of view.
Yes, well, I'm, I'm keenly aware of how much extra money is always floating around and goes to equity and housing affordability, and, you know, really adjusts, addresses the injustices of the system. It's just loads of money always flowing to those things.
Right.
Just sarcasm, in case I need to spell it out. So affordable housing grandfathering, then let's go to affordable housing rate because we have it before us. I, I would feel more comfortable with a third rather than 50%. Ms. Seminow, I'm, no, you're fine, I just, I figured this is a number that you will know off the top of your head. But what is the rate for the fee and lieu for moderate-income housing units?
$2.68 per square foot.
Okay, so my fear is that if we go to 50% of 6.80, then there's no incentive to build an affordable unit for anybody.
And especially if we are not sure what the final number is, saying that it's the greater of 50% that, that greater could be much higher than we anticipated for affordable housing.
I didn't think about that.
Well, if you look at the spreadsheet we were looking at before with these most recent affordable projects, based on the square footages, the number of kids, number of bedrooms, your, your impact fee at 5.50, which is just the delta over the 1.35. you'd forego $11 million despite taking in 600 kids into school.
Well, so, I mean, this packages it all together, but I had the auditors look at, and it will change a little bit because this is just looking at housing commission projects and obviously there are ones outside of it. But looking at a dollar thirty-two rate for senior units, 227, which is a third for affordable units, 680 for market rate, the ones that have to be, the grandfathered at a dollar thirty-two for housing commission projects and signed SDPs. And I think it's, it's a total revenue difference of about two to four million dollars. So you're not losing a lot and you are investing.
Well, I, I mean, some of those were static numbers of grandfathering today and some of it is going forward. I don't know how much affordable housing we're gonna build going forward, but I'm just telling you, for every, let's say, 600 kids that are going into affordable housing apartments based on this metric.
Right, but we don't even know what those are.
You're gonna give up $10 million.
But those could be disability income housing units. If we get that in the code, those could be, we don't know if those are three bedroom units, you don't know if those are studio units.
But that's not what we're talking about now. We're talking about all affordable.
Right, but you're talking about student, you're talking about student yield related, you said 600 new students into the school.
Right, yeah, I don't know that any of these had disability set aside. So I think we could argue that these are, you know, just sort of the general, you know, and so, and, and some of these had a lot of one bedrooms, some were all two and three bedroom. But I mean, it's seven projects, so it's a decent sample size. I'm just, I'm going down the road of, guys, we just spent, we just spent a ton of time talking about what the desperate situation is to get school capacity built. And I want Howard County to invest in affordable housing. But I just, we are not gonna deal with this school problem if we exempt affordable housing, especially three bedroom unit affordable housing. It will make it exponentially harder to grow out of this school problem.
But it's all related.
Yeah, it is related. We're probably getting more kids with higher needs and higher farms out of these affordable units. And I'm not saying that one priority is more important than the other. I'm just trying to figure out what is our urgency now. Everything we talked about of trying to bond these fees, I'm, I'm worried about urgency now. And while we're trying to catch up to then continue to give up the money that should be associated with units that are pumping out a lot of kids into these schools just does not seem to be logical to me.
But the kids are already here. We already have 600 students who are experiencing housing instability and homelessness. When a child has a stable housing unit, they do better in school, it addresses the achievement gap, it moves the needle on everything for that family.
Then let's exempt the first 600 units.
So my, my question, I don't know if you've done the research on this because I have not. Do we know what the, and Ms. Seminow, or, or Mr. Engel may know the answer to this. What do the surrounding jurisdictions do when it comes to charging the impact fee or whatever they call it in other counties?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
You don't know? Do you know, Ms. Seminow? You don't know either? I, I'm pretty sure, actually, Ms. Schwartz Jones, I think you told me recently that Montgomery County does not charge an impact fee at all to affordable housing?
And actually, I'm looking in the package, I thought there was something in here. But Montgomery County does not charge for affordable units. But I, we need to confirm, definitely not for transportation, we'd have to confirm for the school impact taxes.
Okay.
And they also, for projects that have in excess of a certain number of affordable units built, they will send out an entire project.
I add that Montgomery County puts about 30, 36 million dollars annually into actual cash, into creating affordable housing and preserving affordable housing, and we don't do any of that.
We put in about a million from transfer tax?
No, well, that just goes, so.
I mean, it goes not into building affordable housing, but into subsidizing rents for moderate income?
No.
What does the million go toward then, or?
Mostly settlement down payment loans.
Settlement down payment loans. Okay, you should come up to the table.
Which are loans, they're not.
They're loans that are paid back.
Right, they're not grants, it's not a housing trust fund, we, we don't have any of that.
And, and those, and, and those folks with that, and this whole separate conversation of those, that down payment, settlement cost thing, is those don't have to be people that already live here, work here.
They might just have family here or jobs here.
Or they want some down payment help.
But they are moderate income, lower moderate income.
Right, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So we're creating homeownership that would not otherwise be attainable.
I think where I was going with, back to when Christiana said we had, you know, we do have an immediate need. And is there a way for us to, to address the immediate need without, you know, X percentage of the affordable units we build are gonna eat into the immediate need of the people that are here now? And then X percentage are gonna attract more folks here that have those needs. Do you have any information on what that breakdown is?
I mean, we, we provide information for you about how many people already live here or work here. So we would be able to figure out how many people purchase that don't live here or work here. But we do collect data on how many people work here and now wanna live here or people who want to move here. So we could probably give you some type of idea, yes. I'd like to just.
I love place, people, organizations and departments that have data. It's awesome.
I'd like to just, yes, uh-huh, I'd like to just piggyback on one of the things that Peter mentioned is that when you impose a fee on the affordable projects, he's then going to come back to me to ask me to help pay costs to make those projects feasible. So it's again, government money paying to, to create the unit. So that's a key point, that if we, fee in lieu revenue can be used to generate, to, to create units, can help him build units or help renovate units. But then it's using these funds to pay another fee. So I just wanna make sure we understand.
So if, so if we charge a fee to Peter, he's gonna come to you, the county government, to see if he can borrow it from you?
Right.
Which is the county government going, so it's just sort of moving money around.
Borrow it, I'd be looking at it as a grant.
You wouldn't be borrowing it, it's a grant, right? So it's just moving money around from.
So this goes back to original point, I know this is a difficult discussion for you, but that basically anytime this rate is going up, you're taking housing money and putting it into the schools. So money that would be creating or preserving more units for people who need that affordable housing and putting it into the schools. And it's certainly true that affordable housing produces students as does other housing.
Well, there's gotta be a balance, because the, the, the housing produces kids. The schools are overcrowded. So at what point do we take money and try and get it to the schools so they have adequate room for kids who are coming from the housing? I mean, it, there's.
But it doesn't just produce kids, it produces seniors, it produces, I mean.
Right.
What are we gonna do?
It produces a variety of people.
Yeah, I think we're gonna do a, aren't we gonna do a different, well, and I think that's why we, we use averages on these buildings. Cause now that, now that we've got the disability units, that should lower the student yield a little bit.
True.
And.
So I'd like to point out too, Howard Square, which recently built their second phase of apartments, they had very few three bedroom units because the market doesn't have a demand for them. The majority, I, I would say less than 5% of their units are three bedroom. All of their units, and it's 299 units, were one and two bedroom units. Now, there are children, I'm sure, in a one and two bedroom unit, but they did not build any three bedroom units. Annapolis Junction did the same thing, they built studios, ones and twos. I think they had four or five three bedroom units. So some of the developers have told me that on rental, now this does not take into consideration existing projects that were older and have three bedroom units. But new construction, developers are, are not going to three bedroom units.
Let me, I had to listen, I, I was debating whether to jump into this issue or not, but.
We would've dragged you in.
The data on the production, the place where you get two and three bedroom units are in the 50 to 60 unit projects that are applying for the 9% low income housing tax credit through the state. That's the competitive version, that's the one where you need every point, and the state rewards projects that produce two and three bedroom units. So those projects, when we were asked for school yield results, we looked at the 9% projects only. We looked at a couple of those and those do have more two and three bedroom units. But they, the, the 9% credit maxes out at a 50, 60-ish unit project typically. And you get one or two, if you're lucky, a year. So they're never gonna produce hundreds and hundreds of units. They'll be a trickle over many years. And that's, that's the only place I know where anybody's producing larger family units these days. The market rate, not just in the downtown, but overall, if you ask anybody for a market analysis, they're gonna tell you the market is in studios and ones and some twos.
You know, and that, that actually jives perfectly with, well, two out of three with what we have here because there were two projects that were only 84 units that built only two and three bedrooms, Port Capital and Riverwatch. And there was one, there was 160 units that only built two and three bedrooms, so that's a little bit of an outlier. All the rest were, were bigger projects, much more evenly sort of, you know, distributed with the bulk being two bedroom.
So to circle back, cause it took me a minute to find it, but I know how much you like data, Mr. Youngman, and I wanted to find the report called Moving to Educational Opportunity: A Housing Demonstration to Improve School Outcomes. So this is over in Montgomery County and it says, studying low income students randomly assigned to deeply subsidized units in neighborhood schools in Maryland's suburban Montgomery County through the county's inclusionary zoning policy. Schwartz, 2010, found that poor elementary school students achieved significant academic gains in low poverty schools. While students in subsidized housing entered elementary schools behind their middle class peers, by the end of elementary school, they cut the achievement gap in math by half and in reading by a third. And then it goes on.
What was, what's the definition of a, a high poverty and low poverty school?
I'd have to check the Schwartz 2010, but it goes down to comparing public housing students, low poverty schools do better than those assigned to schools with poverty rates above 20%, so I don't know how that impacts.
Cause it's interesting, here in Howard County, we, believe me, I don't wanna talk about the R word. You know, we've talked so much about poor schools, rich schools, but, you know, we tend to not leave Howard County. And what we may envision as a poor school in Howard County, I think if we ventured out of Howard County, we'd realize that.
Well, I was, when I mapped that data, I was actually surprised. There are, oh yeah, there are a good number of schools, if you look at the distribution of schools by farm store, it's kind of like a suspension bridge. You've got a bunch of schools at a very high level, 30 to 60%, I think at this point, 68 is the high one. And you've got a whole bunch at the lower end and you actually have very few around the average in the middle, relatively few.
But I'm not sure that, I've, I've been reading up on this as well, not, you know, redistricting's our thing, but.
Well, I'm looking at housing policy.
It's not our thing, it's not our thing.
Yeah, but for, for, farms, farms isn't, isn't the reliable indicator of poverty.
I mean, you can look at it by census tract, that's how we get our Title I funding, but.
Yeah, but we're, we're getting off the.
We are, but my point is that, my point as it relates to housing in schools is that housing policy is a fundamental part of school policy. And because the stability that you can create when you have affordable housing is so valuable to our school system that the investment in housing affordability is related to the outcomes in our schools. And that's why it's important to invest in affordable housing. If you care about our schools, then we must invest in affordable housing.
I, I don't disagree with that, I'm just talking about dealing with capacity issues and capital issues, not.
I'm just saying these students are already here, they already need places to live.
Well, and that's, and that's why I asked Kelly the question is, you know, I always hear, these people are already here, these people are already here. But X percentage of them are already here. And we have no system of making sure that the folks that are already here get first shot at these units when we build them. So.
We do on MIHU.
We do on MIHU, right.
They have priority, but not on STP.
So, you know, I just need everybody to realize that you are giving up funds, that you need to build a school seat for the kids that are gonna come out of that unit, and there's no guarantee that they're already here.
Well, I, I will say that the data we have is that there are, you know, 5,000 households that are in, you know, that are here already that are in desperate need of housing at this point, or more affordable housing. The Housing Choice Voucher Program also has a preference for people who are here. You can't, you're not actually legally allowed to impose that sort of preference on a standard affordable housing project under Fair Housing rules, yeah.
I'm surprised.
But I will say through my experience in other jurisdictions, this, this comes up regularly because we do, I think just as people who, the way we deal with our families and our broader communities, we try to take care of our own first. And there's just that feeling for all of us to wanna do that. But looking at data, again, I don't have it for Howard County, but I think it's 80 to 90% of people are local who move. You just don't have that much moving from other parts of the state into Howard County. You know, they're not aware of it, they're not, you know, people tend to just wanna stay where they are, again, is a fact. So that's data I had from other places.
And there's no public transportation.
I'm sorry?
There's no public transportation, which limits people who are low income being able to move here.
Tends to limit the very low income, a lot of the tax credit housing type we're talking about are people with real jobs earning 30 to 50,000 dollars a year, they will have a car. Certainly, public transportation helps everybody, not just low income folks and gets people off our roads, and that's something else we could talk about.
Climate change, congestion, traffic.
But I, I do believe that for what we're building, the vast majority of people will be coming from Howard County. It's just how people behave and move. And then you can do marketing as well. So that's one way to make sure that you're trying to reach your local need.
So, when it comes to the rate of affordable housing, I, I think my concerns at setting it at 50% is that it sets it above MIHU, which I am hopeful that the Housing Task Force may look at increasing that rate. But, you know, I, to me, the purpose of having a separate affordable housing rate is to decrease barriers and to incentivize affordable units. So my concern at doing it at 50% is that it would be above MIHU, which might not accomplish those goals.
Right, I, I, the two dollars and, what is it?
2.68.
2.68, the 2.68. So, developers either pay the fee in lieu at 2.68?
If they're building single family detached or age restricted.
Okay.
If they're building apartments, townhomes or condos, the fee in lieu is not an option. They must provide units.
Right, so the 2.68 doesn't really.
It's about $9,000 a house approximately.
And, so you're building a townhome community, if you could, if you could just give me an example. We're building a townhome community of 100 townhomes. And 10%, is that the?
It depends on the zoning, but most of them are 10%.
Most, 10%.
CAC is 15.
So, I'm just trying to use really round numbers here.
I appreciate it, I like the 100.
So that we can come up with a good example, 10%, 10 townhomes.
Yes.
Would have to be for moderate income people.
Correct.
And the impact fee right now that they pay is a dollar thirty-two, right?
Yes, that's the surcharge now, yes.
So it's not that they're paying 2.68.
No, because they're providing an affordable unit.
Because they're providing affordable units, so it's only on detached, it's only on detached housing. So 50% of 680 would actually be a really good deal, yeah.
When it comes to an affordable unit and apartment.
When it comes to building an affordable unit, we're sort of replicating a unit.
But I would say our, our zoning policy hasn't worked because we don't have the number of affordable units we need. So the floor is, if you have a 100 unit apartment building and they're building 10 affordable units, then would the, would the 50% influence the behavior to build more affordable units? Or would it not be worth it? Like what, how does that math work out?
I don't know, maybe we could come up with a, another category. You know, maybe a third for actual affordable units, but.
I'm not sure what you've got now would cover an MIHU unit, so we need to look at that.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it would either.
Right.
As it's written.
Yeah, that maybe there needs to be another category to cover the MIHU unit because right now, it would be at 6. right now, it would be at six eighty.
Or do you have them build the MIHU at six eighty, and then, because they have to, and then anything above and beyond is what's incentivized?
Correct, and that could be something you could do, a incremental scale. Because right now, an MIHU townhouse is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars below the market rate price. So the MIHU price is around three-ten, and the market rate price is in excess of four-fifty, sometimes as high as five hundred. So if you were to do six eighty on the ten percent, and then anything above ten percent that the builder would provide, could be at a reduced rate. To incentivize them to provide more affordable units, yes. And I'd just like to clarify regarding detached, if a builder is developing a hundred detached homes and does not provide any MIHUs, they don't pay the fee in lieu on ten, they pay the fee in lieu on all one hundred. So they pay two dollars and sixty-eight cents a square foot on all one hundred homes, not just the ten that would have been affordable.
And, and they'd still be paying the school surcharge on all of the houses as well, right?
Correct, correct.
So it would be two dollars and sixty-eight cents plus six dollars and eighty cents?
That's correct.
Mm-hmm.
That's correct, on all one hundred homes.
Right, on all one hundred homes.
Single-family detached.
Single-family detached, yes. Seems a little high.
Is, are there any circumstances where a detached project does not in fact provide the onsite affordable units?
Most, we didn't, currently we have no detached units in the MIHU program, all the developers choose to pay the fee in lieu.
I'm sorry, I said detached, I meant attached.
Attached, no, they provide units. They cannot pay the fee in lieu.
If a townhouse project is built, it must, it must contain whatever the zoning-required percentage of MIHU units.
Correct, unless they request alternative or optional compliance.
Okay, that's what I'm asking about.
Yes.
So who requests that, and what does that entail?
A developer can request that based on, there's criteria in the code that states what they can request, and based on what premise that they can request that on. There's multiple steps and multiple layers of approval for them to do that.
Okay, so in not all circumstances, does a detached, I'm doing it wrong again, an attached, if you give me two choices, I'll get it wrong every time, I need three choices. An attached project, an attached housing project does not always provide onsite MIHU units?
Since I have been here, they have always provided onsite units, maybe at a lesser percentage, but always onsite, but they can never pay fee in lieu. That's not an option.
But that means they cannot provide it onsite, but also the county isn't generating the revenue from the fee in lieu?
That's correct, but they would be providing it either offsite or some other type of arrangement.
Okay, and you're saying, not since you've been there, wait, you, no, no, you didn't say, they haven't done it, you said they haven't done it a hundred percent?
That's correct, so if a developer had a fifteen percent requirement, we might require ten percent onsite and five percent offsite, or twelve percent onsite and three percent. There are variations that the code permits.
Yeah, I, I would be very interested in some detail, in terms of how, how that's actually being implemented, because it's very different to say to this council and everyone watching this work session, that if you have an attached housing project, then you're providing onsite MIHU.
That's what I said, I said, you don't, you cannot pay the fee in lieu.
Okay, I think the inference was made that that's, that we're providing that housing in those given projects, and I don't understand that to be the case at all. I understand that some perhaps lesser percentage of what's required in the zoning is being provided onsite, and then something else is being done. I don't, I don't know when we get to this part of the discussion, but the, the conflict that I've heard just in the, what, ten long months that we've been sitting as council, is, is whether or not the, the best policy is to put a new project in, like Robinson Overlook, that is, I understand, a hundred percent affordable?
Uh, no, it does have some market rates.
Ninety, ninety percent versus other projects, and I will always reference then Burgess Mill Phase Two, which has a very low percentage of affordable housing. And I can't, I can't reconcile every successive resolution or project approval that somehow the council is involved in, where that goal and that priority shifts. River Watch Two is what percentage of affordable versus market rate?
Oh, eighty-ish, I forgot the exact.
Yeah, so it seems like we have pocket projects sometimes, and then we have, you know, fifty-fifty in other places, and I don't understand the policy driver there that says, this is right or this isn't right, and then how would we structure that, like a Montgomery County does, if you have a certain percentage of, of affordable housing, then you're entitled to a lower fee. I, I don't, I don't see the pattern yet, and maybe that's coming from this plan that's forthcoming, but I, I, from like a policy and how we implement that, I struggle with the underlying premise, which is what, what are we trying to build and accomplish, and how do we best achieve that?
I would concur that I'm looking forward to a master plan as well, so that we do have those policies in place to do that. Currently, the code gives a lot of guidance on what can and cannot be done, but in terms of the overall policy for housing, and how much affordable do we need, how much market rate do we need, what unit types, where, I'm looking forward to having that guidance.
Okay, and then, I think we collected about nine million dollars in fees in lieu last year?
In fee in lieu?
Yeah.
About eight point seven, no, since it's been in conception, since two thousand fifteen.
Oh, that's total since two thousand fifteen?
Yes, that's total, eight point seven, yes, that's total.
Hold on, let's, anything that could be related to CB fifty, let's, the DEHU, let's go into that, because what we need to decide now is how we're going to look at the affordable unit square footage and the affordable unit projects. So, that's, that's really trying to wrangle you. So where are people feeling on that, on the affordable housing?
I think we, we not, might need to break it down even further, we, you know.
Right, MEHU units.
First, you know, we need to look at the MEHU units, the moderate-income housing units, we try not to use acronyms so that people know who we're talking about. We might need to look at that, we might need to look at builder fee and, versus fee in lieu, you know, are those going to have different rates? So it looks like there's another piece maybe that we need to review or put in the amendment that we've already come up with. I mean, I'm, I'm fine, one-third, fifty percent, you know, either one.
Yeah, I must feel like if you don't put a discount on those, then, you know, why would somebody, well, I guess they have to, in these...
It does seem like, right.
But they only have to do the ten percent, which isn't getting it to where it needed to be.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and if...
You don't want to create a disincentive for people to do it.
No, and they're, if they're already going to be subject to a larger impact fee, you know, adding something above that two dollars and sixty-eight cents seems like that would be pretty significant.
So, that's me, sorry.
What did that voice come out?
Strange echo. I just wanted to kind of follow up on that point with you. We provided a spreadsheet in an earlier memo to you that combines the various rates that a developer will pay, MIHU, school surcharge, and building excise tax by unit type, differentiating between detached units in the west and in the east. So you have, so if, and I can send this to you again, but if you go back through your files, you'll be able to evaluate what that cumulative impact is on a per property basis.
When did you send that, do you remember?
Probably right before the last work session it would have been sent, so I, but I can email it again.
Was that in the Urban Analytics?
No, 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 so this is a...
But it was the memo attached to Urban Analytics?
This was the memo that we prepared for you, and it's in part two of that memo, where we, we calculated the surcharge at different rates from two dollar, in two-dollar increments, from two to ten, with a six-eighty model built in, and we included in the other, we included the other fees that are paid as well, so you can get a sense of a cumulative effect, and how, and how that differs by geographic area and unit type. So that might be a good source of information to help you think through that question.
Okay.
If it's, I think it's in your books, if it's the August fourteenth, is that?
Yeah, it starts, Public School Facility Surcharge Analysis Executive Summary.
But I will say, I think that those things all go into different...
Yep.
While they...
Different paths.
Right, like to the builder, they end up being, this is the fee, but to the county, these are different investments.
Correct.
So we have the school investment, we have a housing investment. Someone had testified that the fees in Howard County were, you know, X amount more, but when they looked at grading permits and things like that, and so we looked at Howard County, Anarundel, Frederick, Montgomery, Prince George's, we looked at water capital connections, wastewater capital connections, user connections to sewer, grading fees, building permit fees, you know, and, and so we're not, I mean, Anarundel is quite expensive. But, but I think that, on one hand, you have the end user, who is the builder, and what they're looking at, and they're looking at sort of the sum total of all these fees, but we shouldn't let that get lost, because, I mean, on one hand, you want to keep, we don't want to push business out of the county, but on the other hand, that two sixty-eight goes to housing, the six eighty goes to schools. If we, where they end up is, is what's important to us. We don't want everything so high that, that we're closed to business, but we also need to make sure that we are investing in the right things for the county, and so that's my only caution.
And one other important point, just technicality, the fee in lieu is optional, it's not a mandatory fee.
Right, they can build, they can build instead of paying the fee.
They could build a single-family detached affordable unit.
Correct, correct.
If they wanted to, or two, or three.
In theory, it's just not feasible, generally speaking.
Right, I'm just saying, kind of in theory...
The line we hear, or the perspective we hear, is that it is not feasible to build a single-family detached affordable unit.
Right, but it's not a mandatory fee, in, in theory.
And it's not necessarily that it's not affordable, or it's not possible, but especially out west, where now you, you're only at, you know, minor subdivisions of, which is four houses, if you built one, you know, now you're at a twenty-five percent, you know, MIHU, which is...
Sounds good.
Double the standard, so, you know, that's...
Great idea, Mr. Youngman.
Well, and I, and to be honest, you know, we actually do need some of the fees in lieu, because, you know, they do feed some, if you get rid of all fees in lieu, you know, they're, they're paying for some stuff that we do need, so.
My, my question though is, we started this exercise with agreeing on the calculation, right? The chalkboard PowerPoint?
Yes, yes.
If we agree that the capital needs are X over ten years, and that's what we're aiming for, then if we're lowering or even exempting a certain category of housing units, doesn't that mean we need to raise the higher number assessed against market rate units in order to net the same amount? I mean, that's, that's the part of this discussion I haven't heard yet, is, I agree with all of this, let's invest in affordable housing, but if our stated goal that I thought we agreed to an hour or so ago was to raise this amount of money across this square footage of, of housing, then as those numbers are deflated in terms of grandfathered existing housing projects or new affordable ones that are, new affordable units that are yet to be built, then to me, there is a corollary, a rise in the market rate fee that would be assessed in order to achieve that stated goal of X dollars per year in revenue to build the schools that we know we need.
Well, that's an excellent point.
Yeah, or, yes, that, that's an excellent point, and, and I think that's where it comes
to a review of other revenue sources, to make sure that our school district is, is funded appropriately, because it is a, it is a trade-off. If we're, i- i- it's a trade-off that we're making as a council, as a county, that we want and value affordable housing, and that one way to do this is to give them, to give affordable housing...
To not increase barriers.
Is not, right, yeah.
And...
But what you're suggesting then is that, okay, fine, so make the impact fee eight dollars, or nine dollars.
For market rate, yeah, in order to, to net that, that revenue that we have decided is necessary, and I, I mean, I, I thought I was fairly unequivocal this morning. I think that those capital project goals are understated, but at least for that historic, you know, last year's CIP over ten years, that in our calculation was our stated goal of what this council wanted to, to raise, and by, by going through this exercise now of exempting or grandfathering in certain projects, you are also necessarily going to have to raise other projects' fees in order to, to net out the same amount.
But where do you raise, where's the drop-off? Where do you raise it so high before you end up having no money, and then you didn't accomplish your goal, because we don't have the money to build schools? That's my concern.
But we don't, I mean, I don't know, is it seven twenty-five?
I don't know.
You have your jurisdictional comparisons, I, I thought six eighty was not, it wasn't an outlier by any means?
No, it's the highest, though, it is the highest now for school surcharge, when you break it out, so.
Plus, there's other jurisdictions...
I don't want to be the highest, but I don't want to be the...
Plus, those other jurisdictions don't have some of the other surcharges that we have, like...
Well, but they have extras, like Montgomery County has transportation, and Prince George's has inside house...
Well, we have the roads, we have the road surcharge, so, but I do think that the way you were going at it was important, was when you talk about making sure you're, you're regionally competitive. From a builder's standpoint, just like when you're buying a house, it doesn't matter what you call it, it really is the, the total number, but this is back to that math, like if we're trying to keep this, if we're trying to, if we're trying to really say that this very simplistic sort of math feeds the same number, and you, you pull square footage out that you're going to charge it on, then, then it is going to likely push that number up. I am happy to see...
I think to me, I was viewing as like trade-offs and realities that we have to accept. Nobody, nobody likes accepting reality, I...
No, I get you.
Everybody hates, I hate being an adult, sucks, but...
That's what sucks about going from advocate to elected official, I'm very happy.
Yeah, it does suck.
I, I'm, I'm honestly happy to see...
Census.
Oh, Mr. Youngman.
It is, you know, it stinks, it stinks when you have to worry about the other twenty-five moving parts, right? But I, I was happy to see the amendment at fifty percent, for what it's worth, because I was afraid we were going to completely exempt, and I do think there has to be a balance and recognition that we are getting kids from those schools.
I went for a third, I recognized it.
You know, so, you know, it's, I just want to, everything's about balance.
Sorry, you want to, there's also another point, is, is the, is the, this provision of the code also has this discussion that's not any part of what's been proposed to be changed, either in the original bill or in, in these amendments proposed, is that there is this discussion about market rate housing that's adjusted by inflation and was set at two hundred thousand dollars, doesn't apparently apply to rental, like what, how, how do those two things correlate?
Are you talking about Ms. Markbit's point?
Yes. I mean, we're having this whole conversation and not addressing the part of the code that actually discusses affordable housing in this section.
Do you have the code number?
It's twenty-eight point one-one-six, right?
Thank you. It's in the, on the actual bill, it's page four. Do you guys, do you want me to give you the exact section?
Wait, but this is the applicant or the immediate family of the applicant?
Well, any new residential, residential new construction, if sold for a fair market value that is less than two hundred thousand dollars, that is then adjusted for inflation in accordance with the CPI...
Oh, twenty, okay.
Is, the, the, the fee collected is rebated, and then, then, yeah, then there's that other exception for, it looks like some kind of...
What is that number now, after, after CPI? Do we know what that number is now, that threshold?
The two hundred, yeah, because what gets sold in this county for less than two hundred thousand dollars?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is, is this what we should be, isn't this something that we should be moving?
Yeah, we should discussion, yeah.
Instead, or in addition to kind of these pieces, but it just seems strange to me that there is a provision that I think is intended to do what some of us would like to do, but we're not actually addressing it by, by the original bill or by these proposed amendments.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think these are just the exclusive, okay, well, so adjusted for inflation, that gets us to about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, which is really not...
What's section?
It's page four, line twenty of the bill.
So, Mr. Ingold, it'd be section twenty-one, four-two, surcharge enacted. And it looks like it is section D of, of section twenty-one, four-two. I'm sorry, section E, E one, two, and three. E1, 2, and 3.
All right, and as a reminder, we have about 15 minutes on the rest of 42. So let's be really focused and intentional with our time.
So that number's 275 now, or 270 something, okay.
277, which is, it's a big number?
Do you think?
There's a ton of housing available in Howard County under 275.
There's a lot under 275? That's only new, there's new construction under 275?
I didn't talk about new construction.
But this is only assessed to new construction?
Right, we were just talking about, you know, if that's our definer, definer, definition? Of delineator of what's affordable, not just saying that
There are some very few townhomes, you were right, Mr. Youngman.
You want to buy any of them?
They probably have more manageable yards.
Well, I, I mean, I can tell you that we have very little affordable for-sale housing period in the county. What we have is through the MIHU program and some earlier pieces of the commission worked on as well. And even those units, when they trade now as affordable, I don't think are selling in this range. You know better than I am, I do, but, so I don't think this has any substantial impact. And the future affordable housing we're trying to build is going to be primarily rental. There'll be some homeownership, but it's primarily rental. I don't see this having any substantial impact on any of that.
Well, and my concern is that if it's a new unit that's sold for 270, I mean, there just aren't new units that are sold at that price. It's just, it's in, there are all these things in our code.
Yeah, the land's too expensive.
I have to say, the 10 months I've been on this council, there are all these things in our code that sound good, that seem like they'll make a difference, but the actual purpose of them doesn't. Like the fact that a builder could buy a unit and flip it as a, and that would count for moderate income housing units. But that never happens. It's in our code, I'm sure it sounded great when it went through, I'm sure everyone was like, yay, yay, yay. And that's to me what this piece is, because it's in here, it sounds good, it seems like it makes a difference. But the realities of the market mean it, it doesn't do anything.
So just currently, the MIHU base sales price based on affordability, beginning July 1st of this year, this is, this is what month is this, this is October, July 1st, is 247 for a three-bedroom townhouse. So even my moderate base price is higher than 200,000, so a developer
It's 277 now.
Okay, 277.
Well, it's two, it's, in the code, it's 200.
Okay, and then it's adjusted for inflation, okay.
It'd be 277.
So the base is 247, and that's a 1,600 square foot, three-bedroom townhome. When a developer actually brings their townhomes to us, most of our townhome prices are close to 300. They're still affordable, but the base price to the actual price, so I don't know of any MIHU townhomes this year that have been priced as at 277 or less.
And it says that, the way this is written, would that count for, I don't think we necessarily wanted to count for the moderate income housing units. We wanted to count for the incentivized units above moderate income housing units.
Well, because there's no, this doesn't tie a unit into staying affordable, it does nothing. It was, if somebody were to do this in order to just get the rebate, and I don't think they would, but that unit then becomes unaffordable as soon as the next sale happens. It's not controlled by MIHU or anything else, it's just a random unit.
It's not perpetuity, it just
And I, I just bringing this back, I think, I think the issue that, you know, that the amendment starts to address, and we're really grateful that you're looking at this to kind of figure out a way to, to do this, is primarily affordable rental housing, and then it's going to be the MIHU units in one way or another that get produced. And those affordable housing units are only produced through some other government program. They're not done, nobody's doing them through the goodness of their heart. You can't afford to even if you wanted to.
Okay, so we started that, and I feel like we all have a good place to, to continue these conversations regarding the affordable unit rate, but especially needing the affordable unit definition. The last thing I think that we need to talk about is where people feel about, about what the grandfathering line is. Because I think you hear arguments for predictability, but then you also have arguments for the revenue, so. Where do we, where do we settle down?
So, Ms. Rickby, is it, are there three different grandfathering, are these all the, okay, this, one of the amendments is for, is similar to one of, the one that I just, okay.
Two, two of them are.
Two of them are, okay. So, we're going to put those aside for now, and we're just going to look at the grandfathering one.
Right, well, I mean, what are people's proposals, I guess is, is the thing that I would, I would like to hear.
And, well, can I ask you a, a question before we get there? So, yours, your proposal is if the developer has gotten to the point where their, their site development plan has been approved?
And signed, yes.
And signed, okay, does it say that's signed too?
So
But it would need to be approved and signed, okay. So, do you know how many, what, how many that would impact?
So
How many developments that would impact? And what the foregone revenue would be on that?
Yes, that is in this spreadsheet that
That's in this one? Yeah.
Well, I might need Ms. Harren's help on that. Yeah. But it includes all of those realities all rolled into it. So it ends up with, if you do 227, yes, if you do signed SDP, if you have the housing commission projects, then you end up at total revenues of 194, which is down from, where's that? It's on the second page, this one, right?
194 million, 281 over the course of approximately 10 years.
Right.
Okay.
But I thought, I thought these were all the numbers that we didn't know, like Ms. Young is asking now for how many SDP plans have been approved, or I thought we needed some further information on how many even housing projects had received state funding right now. So how is, how are these kinds of numbers being calculated when we don't have quantification of those inputs?
Well, we do have, I mean, you can get where the things are in the plan, so that is Ah, it was 198, so it's $4 million. That was the previous one, for, for everything, this whole scenario altogether, so I want to make sure I circle back to get into. But then
What was $4 million?
The difference between, um, no affordable unit square footage, no housing commissions, and no grandfathering, then, but if you do signed SDP, it's housing commission projects, so it's not all affordable housing projects.
It's just four.
So, and then the 227 for affordable unit square footage. That gets you from your total revenue projection of 198 over 10 years to 194 over 10 years. So let me get to the
Ms. Walsh, to answer your question, we, we got information from DPZ. And it was as of September, there were 780 units that were considered as approved or signed site development plans. And that was just a point in time, we know that that number moves, but as we're doing an analysis, you kind of have to just take a snapshot. So there were 780 that we added into the calculation, units that would be considered approved or signed site development plans. In addition to, again, it was the point in time, the 348 units that were receiving state funding.
That includes the 348 units that were receiving state funding, okay. So that's about another 440, 430 units that are just market rate units. If there's 780 units
Now, the 780 units are the ones that we received from information on DPZ that were approved site development plans.
Right, but 348 of those 780?
They're two separate.
Oh, so that's a different number, so it's 780 plus 348?
Well, but that's at a different, if you look at the top line
That's at a different rate, it is.
This yellow highlight?
Right.
That's sort of going over the different buckets that, that make it, that go to that 4 million. But, but in terms of where the process is
Do we know anything about the 780 units, if they're apartments, they're townhomes, they're single family detached?
I just picked a point in the plan.
Well, according to DPZ, the numbers that we were using, it was 664 apartments, 116 were MIHU.
Of that 700.
Of the 700.
664 apartments, wow. And how many were MIHU?
116.
116.
I thought this was for the 748 that were, had site development plan.
Right.
Yes, the seven, the total, the total, the six, 64 and, and the 116 is the 780 units.
Is either at the site development plan or signed in at the site development plan?
These are signed, as of September.
Okay. I don't understand that.
Sounds like
You're saying, you're saying like some significant percentage of all signed site development plans are for apartment projects?
No, when we, we received data from DPZ of the, the plans that are in process. So there's about 7,000 units that are in process. And out of that 7,000 units in process, there were 780 units that they had identified had signed site development plans or approved site development plans.
And of those 780 units, 600 plus of them are apartments?
All of them are apartments, 664 are just the apartments, 116 are MIHU.
I was trying to not go by targeting what specifically was in each stage or the type of unit. I was trying to pick a reasonable point in the development process.
I would say, I mean
So I'm not trying to like punish apartments or look for what the unit type is, I was looking for
A reward.
Maybe it's my inability to process this.
I was looking at the site.
But my inability to process this stems from a staunch opposition to grandfathering in any other than affordable projects. If we want to invest in a certain amount of housing, then that's great. But investing in market rate apartments, apparently largely apartments, I do not think at this point is, is what this county needs to be doing, given the lack of, of school capacity space that we have right now, that's the whole point of this exercise.
I was going on more business predictability, and then you will be, if those projects fall apart, you will be eliminating moderate income housing units.
The predictability thing, the reliability that is thrown out all the time, I, I think parents and kids in schools are entitled to predictability of being in a safe place, of having the amount of teacher attention that they need.
I think we all agree on that, I'm, I'm the only person here with kids in our public schools.
But predictability does not only apply to profiteers, like there's predictability built into quality of life as well.
No, I agree, I
And so, again, this is where I draw the line.
I don't disagree with you, but I'm just trying to have the discussion about it in an appropriate and respectful way.
But I, I thought you didn't want to talk about the kinds of, of projects that were involved in the 700. And I'm, I'm happy to have that conversation offline, because again, it, it could be a processing problem with me, because this is the first I'm hearing of now we're going to grandfather out.
No, it's, I just picked a point in the process because we have to talk about it. And so I don't want to exempt everything out because I don't want to have no money, but I do want to pick a point in the process that has some reasonable bearing. If this has no reasonable bearing, that's fine, we don't have to pick it. I, I don't know how everyone else feels, I just tried to pick a point in the process.
I think it's certainly, I think it's appropriate to have a conversation.
I do think it, it's very appropriate to have a conversation.
It's just like we had the conversation about an affordable project that's already been financed, that's already put together. You know, I, you know, these profiteers are the only ones paying for any of this, so let's not forget that. And, you know, if you've already, if you're already sitting on property, you can't go and renegotiate that, you've already, you've already got a signed off project, I'm now going to add, you know, a couple million bucks to your cost? I mean, I guess the outcome would be you just don't build, which
Then you don't get the money for schools.
Whatever, if you've already closed on that property, then now what am I supposed to do with this property?
Or you don't get the affordable unit, I mean, that's how I look at it.
I do think it's important for us to discuss as a, as a body, what happens at a certain stage, being, not being on that end, I'm not a, you know, developer or a gazillionaire with all these different ideas about how to make a gazillion more money, more, more dollars. However, these entities do, are one facet of Howard County. Several facets that make this one of the best places in the world to live. And I think that we need to consider all facets equally if we can, and I just think it's, it is an important conversation to have.
I mean, is, is the signed SDP where people, the signed site development plan, where people, is there interest in that? Or is there, where do people want the line to go?
Can you remind me where in the process the signed site development plan is? Is the next place shovel in the ground?
I believe the next
That, I, I think that's the best question for DPZ, but I, I believe it, I, I agree. It's like right before they go for building permits. And I see that Jeff has left already, if someone else can
That is correct, that is correct, they can now apply for permits.
So it is the last step before they can put a shovel in the ground?
They cannot apply for any permits until they have a sign.
And so, building permit takes months as well, so it's not the next step before shoveling the ground. It gives you the right to apply for that building permit, and then that's another process in time.
But as Maryland is a late vesting state
Yes, it is.
The, without any provision, where it stops is once you have your building permit. And with this, it would be one step before, which I felt like was a
So, building permit is the last step in the process?
Building permit is when the school surcharge is assessed. So when you apply for the building permit, that's when you get the assessment of the school surcharge.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that's important to understand, because a lot of these, not the apartments per se, but a lot of these single family detached communities, the land developer is not the person that buys the houses. The developer isn't necessarily paying this. It's NV Homes, Ryan Homes, whoever's going to buy that lot and pull that building permit. So if that deal's already done, that home builder now either has to default on buying those lots, which leaves the developer holding the bag, or they have to follow through and buy those lots. And now their cost of construction just went up X percent.
Yeah, I definitely agree, if you get to a certain phase, it would be, it would be really bad for business for us to just move the goalposts, that just doesn't make sense to me.
Is there, is there any, is there any merit in talking about, instead of who gets grandfathered and who doesn't? Because let's say you fall like right under where you're grandfathered. And, and, and I'm not sure people need to be grandfathered 100%, like only paying the dollar 35.
Right, yeah.
Why not just phase this thing in over a couple of years?
How does that look like financially?
I don't know.
It looks like less money.
It's less, it's less money.
I don't know what to tell you guys, you're negotiating with yourselves, like we did the calculation, we got to 680, you're exempting this but not raising the other fee, while we're grandfathering some number of projects in?
No, this is a discussion, Ms. Walsh, this is a discussion among colleagues with various priorities, trying to get everyone to a place where we have a shared understanding and shared agreement.
I was just handing these pieces of paper this morning.
So we could discuss them, I literally just wrote them so we could discuss them, I didn't file anything.
But I, I mean, I'll, I'll
I did the modeling so that way you would know the financial impact, like, I, I, it's just for discussion.
And maybe
Like, there's no reason to act like that.
Maybe
It is me this time.
That's okay, maybe, yes. The timing of the money is important, too. Councilwoman Walsh, I believe you are correct in saying, okay, like really upfront, early, it may be less money, but if there's certain actions that we take in law and we codify certain things, and have projects 25%, 50% of the way through, move the goalposts over time, you know, things may play out in a space where, where we're not sure. And I don't know what that looks like all of the way, but I do know business predictability is one of the things that make our county successful.
And, and that's why when it comes to regulations, we have grandfathering built into the code. You know, it just doesn't apply to fees.
But that, that grandfathering provision exists in the code right now.
Yes, but it doesn't apply to this.
Just zoning regs.
And it's sooner in the process than a signed, approved plan.
It's not technical, I think, if you want to draw a line, which again, I certainly do not, I think it needs to be plainer where that line is. I don't, I don't know that necessarily all projects need a site development plan. So this is already not defining some number of projects.
Literally just wanted to have a discussion.
I, I think we're going to, we're going to fine tune all this, right? I mean, I have 100 more questions and comments, but we're just trying to get the information out and
Yes.
Have conceptual discussions of it.
And then, I mean, I think, Mr. Youngman
Do you think, are we, are, do you think we, we'll have another work session maybe, or are we thinking about trying to do that?
Okay, then everyone's going to have to check their calendars during lunch.
Okay. I'm just thinking, you know, we have raised a lot of good questions here.
But I think that the important thing is that the work can't just happen at work sessions. That means that, Mr. Youngman, if you're interested in a phase in, then we're going to need to see that type of modeling, like these discussions are going to continue to have to happen, because
Time is running out, time, we need to pass something.
And I know, I know that since the memo came out, the opinion came this morning for the different rates and percent, you know, different things, I'm now more curious about some things as well, so, yes, I would not like to see this table So, yes, I would not like to see this tabled again and we do have a lot of work.
Excellent, good.
Well, if I can finish.
So focus is necessary, yes, on this bill in particular, yes, so that we can get all of this information out and talk about it amongst ourselves.
And I only, the only reason I even brought up.
Not, not as, not, never more than three of us at once, or never more than two of us at once, I should say. Yes, thank you.
But the reason I brought it up is because it's a provision that we need to discuss per the state bill.
Yes.
And so, we might as well discuss it. And what, where that is, or what the point is, or whether it's a phase in, or what it's needed, or if it's nothing at all, it's still just a discussion that we needed to have.
And for the, and for the public that's watching, even including my stuff this afternoon, this is the most important thing we're dealing with right now.
Yes.
We are all hands on deck.
Absolutely.
The school system was awesome getting here today.
Yes.
So, if it takes longer for us to get it right, it's not because we're just dilly-dallying.
Correct.
We know that it's an urgent need.
Or we will quickly work together.
This is the second month this has been pending.
Yeah, it's like, yes, but I don't want it, my point is I don't want to, I don't want this to go on into November.
I mean, it took a year and a half to get APFO done, you know, if we, takes us three months.
Well, we've been working on this all summer.
Yeah, that's like 9 million dollars.
And we have been giving information to our colleagues all summer as well, as well as to the development community and the affordable housing community. So it isn't as if this has been some big secret and hasn't, people haven't been discussing it, so.
Right, and I'm willing to wait on 1.2 million dollars we can get it right, but I'm not willing